All right, we'll call this City Council regular meeting agenda for May 22nd, 2023 to order at 6:40 PM. If you would, please all join us as we are led by Councilmember Barry for our invocation and followed by the pledges by Councilmember Cam Carr. All right, all right, well, welcome. Welcome to City Hall. Thank you for your indulgence as we had another meeting ahead of this that kind of went over just a little bit. So we got started with our proclamations just a tad, tad late, but we'll make up for it in due time. So thank you for being here. Thank you for, for coming out and being a part of our local government here. With that, we'll move forward with our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary will certify, we do have a quorum present as all members are present and accounted for. With that, we'll turn to citizens' comments. I believe we've received several citizens' comments under general and we will call those out. Mayor Protem will call you one at a time. You'll have, please go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. There's a clock that'll be on both sides of the dais that you'll be able to see. And I believe we have one or two comments on a specific item and we will call your name up when we get to that new business item. So, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, the first speaker is Pat Hill. If you'd make your way to the podium and state your name and address, then you'll have three minutes to talk. Thank you.
My name is Pat Hill. I live at 2710 Green Tea. I'm going to address a few things Mr. Cam Carr stated at the May 8th council meeting. And I'm going to be speaking quickly as I do have a lot of things to say in three minutes. And just for the record, I did vote for Mr. Cam Carr. Mr. Cam Carr stated that this felt like a witch hunt. This was not a witch hunt. This was Councilman Cam Carr getting caught red-handed sending emails from his personal email account containing confidential and privileged information. He went on to say that other council members breached confidentiality prior to his emails. If he has physical evidence, please bring it forward. Right now, all he has is unsubstantiated claims and hearsay. Mr. Cam Carr said he sent these emails because the previous city manager didn't treat the police right. In my observation, the previous city manager treated quite a number of people disrespectfully and at times with disdain. Last time I checked, council members were elected to serve all of us, not just one group, no matter how deserving that group is. In one email, Mr. Cam Carr addressed the recipients as team and wanted them to advise of any landmines regarding police. The next email sent was, "Did not come for me." The optics here paint a disturbing image. Looks like Mr. Cam Carr is trying to circumvent the vetting process by going through alternative channels to get information on the candidates. In doing so, he not only tainted the well, but he unwittingly put a target on the backs of law enforcement who do not deserve this. Mr. Cam Carr said he gladly take the reprimands, but he wants to expose hypocrisy. He said he proposed the hardest ethics ordinance in the state of Texas, yet he can't see his own glaring hypocrisy. Mr. Cam Carr stated that he would take his reprimand as a badge of honor. A badge of honor is worn by honorable people and right now, in my opinion, Mr. Cam Carr is not among them. This isn't behavior of a trusted city council member. This is that of an insolent individual who backed himself into a corner and dug his own hole. Mr. Cam Carr offered no proper apology. There was no contrition whatsoever. The only thing he offered were excuses. Mr. Cam Carr betrayed the trust of those of us who elected him into this office. If any of this had come to light before the election, I doubt he would have been reelected. Mayor and council members, this mess with the previous city manager, this didn't spring up overnight and we all know it. I do greatly appreciate you terminating the previous city manager's employment as well as bringing the Cam Carr debacle to the public. This goes a long way towards shoring up the trust issues the public has with elected officials as well as staff. This city cannot run efficiently when there is little to no trust in its elected officials or its staff. I would urge you all to continue to shore up your house. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, if you'd say your name, address, I'm sure you know the protocol and we'll give you three minutes. Thank you.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsell Street, Pearland. Counsel, I've reviewed the documentation regarding the leaking of confidential information to unauthorized third parties. I noticed on the two emails that were sent, one email to members of the PPOA told them what the councilman was asking of them, to advise of any landmines regarding police. The other email sent less than two minutes later was to Mr. John DeSpain. That email did not ask anything of Mr. DeSpain. It simply said, "Did not come for me." I pondered the lack of a stated request with Mr. DeSpain and the fact that Mr. DeSpain is on the TMPA and TMPA was the one that contacted the candidate that withdrew. I have some questions I feel need to be answered and I think the only way they can be is via an investigation by this council. Number one, why was there not an ask of Mr. DeSpain? Is it because it was previously planned and Mr. DeSpain knew what he had to do? Two, did Mr. DeSpain solicit this information from the councilman and was the councilman aware of what Mr. DeSpain was going to do with it? Three, who proposed the idea and who was the accomplice? Four, what role did Amber DeSpain play in this? Mr. DeSpain forwarded the email to her. I would assume it would be standard practice to bring in groups like PPOA and fire department to meet with finalists. They didn't get a voice though. Mr. Epperson was robbed of the chance to prove he was the best candidate. I hope he was and I do think he's going to do a great job. Unfortunately, the task of choosing the next city manager to lead our city was taken away from the body that was entrusted by the residents to make that decision. And now there's no doubt a fog of mistrust over the chamber and the concern that what is said in executive session may be leaked. I heard all kinds of excuses for the behavior. I heard a senior citizen blamed. I heard the excuse because Mr. Epperson told some friends he was going to apply. They did excuse the leaking of confidential information. I heard a sitting councilman who's provided a small number of services for over a decade to the city be blamed as being unethical when the violation of the city's ethics ordinance was outlined. I heard everyone blamed and the one responsible did not take responsibility for their actions. Therefore, I assist council launch an investigation and use their subpoena powers to find answers to these questions and any others that may arise during the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Our next speaker is Denise Hewitt. And if you'd make your way to the podium and state your name and address and we'll give you three minutes. Thank you.
Will I mess this up if I close the laptop? Denise Hewitt, 3404 Blue Spuce Trail, 77581. Good evening, Mayor Cole and council members. Wow, where to start? I'm sickened by the uncovering of Councilman Alex Cam Carr's breach of city's confidentiality. As shared in the May 8th city council meeting, Cam Carr was publicly reprimanded for leaking via his personal email the clearly marked confidential consultant document to three members of the Pearland Police Department, all leaders and professional organizations, Pearland Police Officers, PPOA and Texas Municipal Police Association, TMPA. On February 7th, candidate Cam Carr posted on his political Facebook page that he had received the PPOA statement. But 10 days after that was the official deadline for candidates to apply for the endorsement. Note, Cam Carr was the only candidate endorsed. A candidate endorsement was not chosen for the other open council position. March 13th, candidate Cam Carr noted on his campaign finance report that he received $1,000 contribution from PPOA. April 12th, it's a Wednesday, the date the consultant noted on the cover letter of the confidential document when it was sent to the city. April 23rd, Sunday, 11 days later, Councilman Cam Carr sent the 104 confidential pages via two emails, one to the president and vice president of the PPOA and to the third vice president of the TMPA. This action resulted in a candidate being contacted regarding a background search. This timing and actions do not reflect well. It tends to give the appearance of quid pro quo collusion, whatever you want to call it. It looks really bad. Mr. Cam Carr, I personally know that this is not your first breach of confidence. You reached out to me personally within a few hours of the executive council session discussion regarding J. Hex bill investigation update. You shared the executive session discussion in detail, naming names of the employees under investigation, requested me to submit a public information request on specific documents for the purpose of making it public. You thought that it wasn't going to be disclosed in a timely enough manner. You took this action regardless of the council and city's agreement on how to gather information, determine the impact to employees and next step forward. This seems to clearly be the manner in which you operate. Breach confidence when you personally do not agree with the path forward or the timing doesn't suit your liking. I personally hold Councilman Cam Carr responsible for this latest breach through his selfish motive to gain inside baseball information on finalist candidates. Mr. Cam Carr, your breach of confidentiality was an unsavory act and as I shared with you last week when you reached out to me, you left four people in harm's way without even so much as a public apology. You mocked the public reprimand metered out to you and declared it as a badge of honor. There is no honor whatsoever in your act. Your public reprimand means nothing. It isn't documented. It's only historical references, the video. In your arrogance, you left at risk the reputation of three tenured police officers, one outside candidate exposed and the difficult selection and the default selection of the city manager. Also, you wasted nearly $30,000 consultant fee for conducting a breach candidate search, not to mention the opening of the city to possible civil suits. Councilwoman Cam Carr, you have demonstrated your inability to uphold your oath to office and I'm asking you to turn in yourself, describe badge of honor and step down. You have dishonored your position, dismissed the city's governance, mocked the discipline metered out, harmed reputations and the employments of the other, and completely disrespected the citizens of Pearland. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. The next citizen is Paul Eskine. If you'd make your way to the podium, state your name, address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Mayor Cole, City Council, it is with deep dissatisfaction that I come here tonight to make comments concerning the release of confidential information and the subsequent reprimand of Councilmember Cam Carr. In the past, I have spoken-
Paul, real quick, would you give your address?
Paul Eskine, 2519 Park Avenue, Pearland. In the past, I have spoken at city council meetings- In the past, I have spoken at city council meetings to either show my support for or my opposition to a particular subject, but never to show dissatisfaction with any one council member. I was stunned to learn that the councilmember Kamkar had leaked highly confidential information, and not only information from the council's executive sessions, which in itself is confidential, but in the packet marked confidential from SGR that stated that any release of names or other information contained in the packet can reasonably be predicted to cause damage to the persons contained herein. No names or other information may be released or revealed in any way without approval of SGR. And to top it off, this is a personnel matter, which should also be confidential. I would have appreciated Mr. Kamkar admitting his transgression, to apologize to the council, to the city staff, to the citizens, and especially to the two semifinalists for the city manager position. Simple, straightforward, enough said. But that was not done. Mr. Kamkar stated that he would take the reprimand but felt he was being singled out. He states that other council members leak executive information all the time, which I have not seen. He stated that members of the public knew that Mr. Epperson had thrown his name in the hat, and this was confidential information. Mr. Epperson told the press, I believe in March, that he was running, which was not confidential. He stated that he did this to support the Pearland Police. Quote, "If supporting police and wanting them to have a city manager who supports them is wrong, I don't want to be right." He said he takes it as a badge of honor to be reprimanded. What kind of comments is this from a city council member? As far as I know, the mayor and the entire city council support our police department and think they're doing an excellent job. Mr. Kamkar put the candidates' jobs at risk. The cities they work for could fire them for applying for a job away from their city. Mr. Kamkar put the Pearland Police Officers Association in the bad light and unfairly connected all of this with the Pearland Police Department. Mr. Kamkar owes the current city manager Trent Epperson an apology for Mr. Epperson to be offered the position, but then find out that he was the only one left just looks plain bad. Was he the one the council really wanted? He could have made the decision not to accept the offer. Then where would we be? Thankfully, he has accepted, and I am supportive of him. Think he'll do a fine job. To sum it up, I believe trust has been severed between councilmember Kamkar and the rest of the council, the city staff, and the members of the community. I hope that in time repairs can be made. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. Is that, we have one more?
We've got one more. Thank you, Mayor. We'll call Nicole Streeter up to the podium. If you'd make your way, you have three minutes. Please state your name, address, and thank you for coming in.
I was so appalled. My name's Nicole Streeter. My address is 12,002 Lindenwalk Lane, Carroland, Texas, 77584. I was so appalled at watching the video of Alex Kamkar responding to his fellow council members in regard to his breach of confidentiality, that I've come after work, not wholly prepared, but wholly understanding that what happened was wrong and that I needed to make it here before I go home. I've dragged my daughter here with me. I was absolutely appalled at the breach of confidentiality, appalled at the breach of integrity of this governmental body. Executive session should be a place in which the board or this body has an opportunity to review confidential items away from the public because the information might in some way damage the process or this body. So that is absolutely appalling that you have breached the integrity of your fellow council members. I have the Texas Open Meetings Act, and under Section 11D criminal provisions, it provides that an individual corporation or partnership that without lawful authority knowingly discloses to a member of the public the certified agenda or a recording, this could be out of executive session, that was lawfully closed to the public under this chapter commits an offense and is liable to a person injured or damaged by the disclosure. I am requesting an official investigation of Alex Kamkar's breach of confidentiality. I would ask that this body engage in that. There have been other municipal bodies that have had breaches of this type, and the appropriate damages were awarded to the person, and I think that we need to investigate this officially. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and comments. Mayor, that's it for general comments.
General comments, all right. Thank you for that. We will move forward in our agenda to our first public hearing. I would, Martin, would you place the item or read into the record the reason for the public hearing and then move forward with your staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This first public hearing is a request by Robert McDonald, applicant on behalf of Huan Lee owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for massage establishment use on approximately 1.4785 acres of land located within the general business district. This property is generally located at 3220 Kirby Drive, Suite 120 here in Pearland. On the screen, you can see the aerial and zoning map. You can see that the subject property is zone general business and is surrounded by either R2 single-family residential zoning, RE, the residential estate, or plan development, and that the future land use plan indicates this property and surrounding properties to the west are in the public semi-public future land use designation, and that the surrounding uses around there are a detention pond, self-storage facility, and the Shadow Creek High School athletic fields. So, brief history on this property. The property was developed as an 8,000-square-foot multi-tenant retail building built in 2019. Here, you can see a view of the property from across Kirby Drive, and then you can see the general layout of the tenant suites, and then we've shaded in Suite 120, which is where the proposed massage establishment would take place in. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission held their regular meeting on May 1st to discuss this use. At that time, each of the seven commissioners stated that they would approve this use without additional conditions. With that, Mayor, I will pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you, Martin. Is the applicant present? There we go. Do you have a presentation, or are you just here to answer questions? Okay, wonderful. Thank you for being here. We may call on you if we have some questions. All right. Thank you for that. We'll move forward with our public hearing. Open it up to the room for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. You can go to the podium, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Second request, for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one move in that direction, we'll move it to City Council for questions, comments, and concerns. Anyone have a question? Robert Barrett?
Mayor, I don't mind starting this off for myself here. You know, I'm sure that Ms. Lee and her business practice is perfectly fine, and I applaud them for coming to council and bringing this information on over to us, but I'm just opposed to the fact that we have an establishment of this sort across from my high school, so I'm a no.
All right.
Mayor, I'll be a no for the same reason. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
It said in the packet that the applicant also owns the drink establishment. Can you go to the podium, please?
Yes, my name's Robert McDonald. I live at 611 West Calvi Kate Street in Houston, Texas. I'm here representing Ms. Natalie Canada. She's the owner of the Mia Thai Tea Shop, and they propose lease space at number 120 next door.
Okay, so same owner, she's just looking to put a different type of business next to her existing business. Does she have any other types of businesses, or is the massage kind of the main?
She owns a sole massage shop on Net Street in Houston off of Washington Avenue.
Okay, I saw that. And you might be wondering why I'm even asking about that, but you know, we've had lots of discussions up here trying to, you know, do what we can to root out potential bad actors in this space. I looked up the other location, Mayor, and I didn't see anything negative online. Sometimes these massage establishments will pop up on certain sites that we've been made aware of, and I didn't see that this one did. And the fact that it's next door to an existing business that, you know, is a pretty, I don't know, innocuous type of place, it doesn't seem to be anything out of the ordinary, even next to a high school. I think that there is a potential synergy here because will there be any, like, sports massage or anything to this, or is it just like your traditional, you know?
I'm here with Ms. Canada. She's the owner of the massage.
Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Natalie Canada. I live in 3803 Vermont Street, Fresno, Texas, not far from Pearland. And sorry, I'm not good in English. I try to explain my best. Okay, the Thai of massage I do now. Okay, we do like, I learned a lot of massages from Thailand, 500 hour and 500 from here. And then we do provide like a Thai massage. Mostly, I recommend the customer, we do like a Thai combination. Thai combination like we do like a sleep on the body, and after that, okay, we use the deep form, like a sweeted, but deep sweeted. And then after that, we use the hot stone on the body, you know, make it like after we do deep tissue, make it more relaxed. And then I do sweeted massage, sweeted massage, we don't work on the body. You know, mostly, we do like oil and we use the hot stone, you know, and like, and the oil is good smell, make you relax. And then we do Thai massage like on the table. It's mean like we do stretching, we do like a, yeah, therapeutic massage, and we do like make you more like more flexible, you know, like a stretching. Some people, they get hurt a lot, you know, some people. I try help people a lot here, you know, sometime when they walk in the shop, they know been massage before, you know, they cannot lift the arm up. And he tried to come, I tell him try to come twice a month if he can. And after that, like about two or three months, he really happy he can lift the arm up because sometime the massage is not like a, like a doctor, but we do more time, you know, for healing the muscle is a steep or you have some not, you know, some people work hard, we need to do that.
So, are you aware and okay with all of the conditions that are attached to our conditional use permit for this use? You are, so like, no, the rooms not having the locks and all this stuff, it being accessible, no, you know, blacked out windows, things like that, you're fine with conforming with all of these uses, I mean, all of these provisions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Because we have a lot of Thai massage, the open like that, yeah.
Yeah. I used to briefly live in northern Wat Don Chan in Chiang Mai, well, just north, and there was a massage school next to us, and-
Oh, yes.
They used to come and ask us, can we please practice on you? And we say, oh, sure, I guess. And Thai massage is very therapeutic, so I think there could be some synergy there with the high school because I know that, you know, from a sports perspective, you know, with having to stretch and things like that. So, I have no problem with it, and you seem to be legitimate, so I'll probably be yesterday. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Member Patel?
Fucking got to work. One of the things I read was it meets seven out of eight criterias. And what's the eighth one? It says, it says a future change. Is that correct? It's in the recommendation, it said, staff finds that the proposed CPU for massage establishment meets seven out of eight.
So, that eighth criteria, hi.
Yes, sir.
That eighth criteria is dealing with the future land use plan, and this is a remnant or an issue that we've known about and that we are addressing in the upcoming Conference of Plan, the Pearland 2040 Comp Plan, will address that eighth condition. Currently, the future land use plan shows this as public semi-public, and a commercial use would normally not be in conformance with the public semi-public use. So, it's just a map issue. It's not necessarily an issue that would keep staff from making a full recommendation for approval.
Okay. And then, did you guys look at the current business that she does out of their type? Did we by just by any chance Google it and see? I know someone just said they Googled it and didn't see anything wrong with it, but did you see the interior by any chance?
I don't know that anyone did.
Member Patel, this is Lawrence from Legal.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that when this issue originally came up, because the Neff Street was referenced or the business at that location was referenced, we actually did have our Farm Marshal's Office reach out because they've helped with other investigations of some massage establishments. I don't know if they actually visited the site. However, they reached out to other law enforcement agencies in that jurisdiction to verify whether there had been any negative reports in any way whatsoever that would cause concern, and we did not hear anything negative come back to us. Additionally, they reached out to the, I'm going to forget the name of the exact department, but the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulations to make sure that Ms. Canada had the appropriate licenses to host this type of establishment and look for any negative comment from them, and did not get anything negative from them.
Great. Thank you so much. That's all I got.
Thank you for that. Any wrap up? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I thoroughly want to play by the rules. The rules were made with a collaboration with a bunch of different entities, so I appreciate you jumping through these hoops. This is to keep our kids and families safe, and so, thank you.
Thank you. You wrap up? All right. With that, we'll close this public hearing, move to new business item number one. Member Carbone, would you present that item for consideration, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R 2023-CUP 2304, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We've had staff report as well as comments and questions from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Cozo?
Aye.
The motion fails three to four.
All right. With that, we'll move to public hearing number two. Same drill, Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. For the second public hearing, this is a request by Jeff Bootay of Windrose Land Services, applicant on behalf of PHE Fight Interest LP Signature Companies and Tranquility Lake Estates LLC, owner for approval of a zone change for 14.857 acres of land from the general business district plan development to accommodate a proposed mixed-use townhouse community with approximately 109 single-family lots, open space, and a retail component. This is generally located at the northeast corner of Cullen Parkway and Fight Road. So, previously in 2020, or 2022, we held a joint workshop about this request. That was at the July meeting. The applicant and city council at that time had discussions and gave some feedback on the proposal. General topics of discussion included the potential opposition from the adjacent residential neighborhood, affordability of the units, provided access amenities, and the off-site dis- affordability of the units, provided access amenities, and the offsite detention within the existing lake at Tranquility Lake Estates. You can see again the aerial and zoning map of the property. All of the property is zone general business. And it abuts R1, general commercial, R3, and the Neighborhood Services District. And it is within the retail offices and services future land use designation. So looking at the various uses that are around there, you have undeveloped property to the north. You have the single-family residential neighborhood to the east and Tranquility Estates, along with some manufacturing warehousing against that east property line, Southwick subdivision to the south with a convenience and gas store at a corner at Edgewater Estates. And then across Cullen Parkway, you've got offices and offices and services, along with the cell tower that was previously approved by council there on Old Chocolate Bayou. So again, given a little bit of light history for this development or this property, the southern two thirds were zoned for planned unit development in 2001 and indicated a 54 town home unit community with a small commercial area. It was rezoned in 2004 for general business and has remained that way since. The northern third was rezoned in 2006 from the holding district of suburban development to the general business district. And then the subject property was rezoned with a request from general business to single-family residential. And one request was denied by council in 2015. Property is currently undeveloped. And according to the aerial maps, the property has appeared to have no prior development to it. So this outline gives you a good idea of where the town home district or whether where the town home development and the remainder commercial area would exist. And then this is the submitted design plan. You can see a majority of it or of the plan is for the town home component and that about just over 10% or shy of two acres is in the future retail area there at the hard corner of Cullen and Fight Road. Walk you through some of the intricacies of the plan. You can see that they are providing a good amount of landscaping throughout the community. There is a flower garden with a gazebo kind of there in the middle of the development. And then there is an open park area that divides kind of the center block with a good amount of trees provided in that area. On the amenity plan, they are providing some decorative stamped concrete entryways with the monuments and gating, and then a walking trail that connects the unit's interior to the site. And then located at number C here, they are showing a pre-manufactured gazebo structure. So this is a rough breakdown of some of the regulations that they are seeking deviation to. The proposed deviations are what we've seen in similar developments with town home proposals. Those include changes to lot area, lot width, lot depth, coverage, and then the setbacks for the corner lots, as well as some of the corridor overlay district standards with a change in the screening setback, the allowed materials for the residential fencing, and then the building facade standards. Not all of the deviations, I'll point out, are reductions, such as the minimum lot depth is actually showing a five foot increase. And then the building facade standards also show an increase to the masonry requirements that they themselves are proposing to adhere to. This is some conceptual conceptual images of their screening and fencing that they're looking to provide. And then there are both three-unit town home buildings and four-unit town home buildings that they've provided renderings for. And this is another another shot showing the various elevations, and then the floor plans for those units. And the four unit also with the elevations and the proposed floor plans for each of those units. Again, taking a look at the surrounding area and what the existing conditions are. These are current shots looking at Cullen Parkway and Fight Road, and then from the corner at Cullen and Fight. So in order for a plan development to exist, it has to meet at least one of the criteria for establishing a plan development. This meets two of the criteria as noted on the screen. And then the PD approval criteria indicates that we do meet conformity across all of the sections for approval. Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing and discussed the subject zone change at their regular meeting on May 1. After the discussion, the commission voted to approve the requested change from general business to plan development with an amendment that the PD restrict cross access between the subject site and Tranquility Estates neighborhood to only have emergency vehicle access. The motion was passed unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Since that May 1, time to bringing it forward to council today, the applicant has made the requested change and that is reflected in, I believe it's Exhibit E within the proposed ordinance. With that, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
Just real quick, before we move on to the applicant, so the PD that's in front of us tonight does have this restricted cross access?
Correct. So there's no additional corrections that you
Just making sure. Okay. With that, is the applicant present? All right. Do you have a presentation tonight?
Good evening. Jennifer Evans with Signature Companies, and I represent two of the ownership groups that have property associated with this PD. Planning gave you a little bit of a backstory. As you may have caught on, this is a bit of a full circle moment. We're back asking for what was granted 23 years ago. In that time, after we got that entitlement, I guess we just timed out. And so then we came back based upon other development that we were doing in the area that was more aligned with suburban office and commercial development. And, you know, quite frankly, at that time in Pearland, those type of development opportunities were going well. And as he referenced, the property
Jennifer, real quick, give your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Jennifer Evans with Signature Companies, 9525 Katy Freeway, Suite 124, Houston 77024. Anyway, we developed the property, the office building across the street on Cullen Parkway. We're working with Methodist Hospital on a office campus for them. As good capitalism goes, sometimes we lost that opportunity to some to another developer and their facilities have gone more on 518. But what I want to talk about is during that time, we made several acquisitions because of the energy of what was going on in this quadrant. And when I say quadrant, I'll say it's Magnolia, today's Magnolia to 518, 1128 to Cullen Parkway. I'll call that the quadrant. We bought 15 acres of property, which is now Mirror Lakes. And this is all during this 2000 to 2006, 2007 timeframe. We bought those 15 acres. We bought nine acres down at 1128 in Fight. We bought 40 acres at Magnolia in 1128. So 2007 happens, 2008 happens. And we all we all know what that was like. But as Pearland began to come back, the Mayor Reed used to refer to this as the belt buckle of Pearland because it was dead center. Well, as as development began to come back, what we found was that the energy that this quadrant had had really moved to Kirby and to Shadow Creek. And that was, you know, we would meet, you know, endlessly with Matt Buchanan. I don't know if he's in the room, but, you know, Mike would be like, let's meet with Matt, let's meet with Matt. But it was it was kind of eerie how this quadrant became so quiet. So fast forward, here we are today. We're Mirror Lakes has been developed in the last maybe seven years. Okay, so 23 years, seven years. Magnolia, we were fortunate to get the PD approved earlier this year. I did sell the nine acres at 1128 and Fight to what is a proposed storage facility and retail development. So we, as the owner of this track went, so what is really the highest and best use for this property in today's market? And what we came back to was, it's probably not more suburban office complex with what's going on immediately around us. It's probably a rooftop component. So we, you know, got our land planners working. We met with Renee with West Development and proposed her track adjoining. We had come up in opposition to her request for a zone change a few years back to single family. Council asked us at that time to go visit with each other, find a common ground. So we did that. We met with the neighbors along with the group that has come alongside us to develop this property. And so anyway, so we're we're here asking for this consideration. Hopefully, hopefully, we're able to get the approval. And if so, one of my partnerships will stay in control of the commercial reserve. So in the PD, you'll find that, as planning stated, you know, we've addressed facade and we've addressed uses, all with the intent that it complements what goes on around it. But what we know is that it will be contingent upon the success of what goes around it. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jeff, and he can share more about the town home piece as well.
Thank you for that. Jeff, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Bootay with Windrose Land Services. Address is 5353 West Sam Houston Parkway North, Houston, Texas 77041. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to give a bit more context to the development. Martin did a good job introducing it. As you can see on the screen here, we are located at the northeast corner of Cullen and Fight Road. We've already established the property is currently zoned general business. And so we are seeking to zone to a planned unit development with a dual base district of town home and general business for the base. You see on the screen here, the zoning map, and our property is shaded in green. They're in the center. So we are proposing 109 town homes on fee simple lots, so individually platted lots. In fact, we've prepared the plat so that once, hopefully, when this rezoning is approved, we can continue on with the plating process soon after. Windrose Land Services is a planning and land surveying company. There's also Kevin Stuckey's here with McLean Homes to to talk about the residential development side, and he'll come up to speak in a moment. You can see here that there's general business surrounding to the north, but there's also residential uses to the south and to the west and to the east. And so we feel like this site specifically sits in a transition zone between the higher intensity uses going on on Broadway Street and the more the less intense and more residential uses that are happening south of Fight Road. And this this slide in particular shows where we sit in terms of the future land use plan. So our site in the future land use plan is in the retail offices and services area, which is, as you can see from the aerials, it's a mix of offices, commercials, and some residential. And so town homes here serve as a pretty good buffer and residential transition between those higher intensity uses and the medium and low density uses to the south. Kevin did, Kevin and Jennifer did meet with members of the community immediately adjacent to the east. As Martin said, we amended the planned unit development document to to make sure that it's very clear that there's only emergency access access between the town home neighborhood and to the single-family neighborhood to the east. So there won't be any cut through traffic either way. And we've also added to the PD some language that would explain that there should not be any construction traffic either during construction of the site. We've actually prepared a drone video, if we may, if there's time, I can click on YouTube. Thank you. This will be a great way to see the site in context and see. As Jennifer mentioned, Mirror Lakes is very nearby to the east. And so we're crossing the lake now, going to look at that Mirror Lake development, which would be very similar in design to this one. So what you see on the screen here is a rendered version of the design plan. Wanted to call out some of the features that we are providing. So there are four over four acres of common open space, trails and recreational area to be maintained by the HOA, roughly 30% of the total site. There are common open space areas which have to be graded, turfed, and landscaped within 200 feet of every unit that's walkable per pedestrian paths. The trails are decomposed granite. And as Martin mentioned, there'll be decorative stamped concrete at the entry at the entry monument at the Cullen entrance. He did say there were some deviations from the existing town home regulations you have now. I've noted those areas where we're exceeding the standard that is currently in the code. So in the the current standard town home zoning does require 3,000 square foot lot area. We are reducing that, although making the lots a bit deeper. As Martin said, that's consistent with other town home PD type developments that have been that have been approved. Where we're making up for that is in the common open space area. So the current code requires 900 square feet of open space per unit. We're providing 1,031 per unit. The common areas themselves, those areas that should be graded and drained for recreation The common areas themselves, those areas that should be graded and drained for recreation, those are required to be at least 6,000 square feet in the current code. And we were proposing that all of the areas that in our PD will be 17,900 square feet. So quite a bit larger. And then also the current code says that these common areas should be within 300 feet of every unit. We've reduced that to 200 feet. Access has been mentioned frequently. So on the map here, you can see that we are proposing only one place for ingress and egress, which is right there at the green dot on Cullen. There will be two other, two other egress only exits. One off near the cell tower site to the northwest and then another on Fight Road. And then there will be two emergency access only and points. One of those being also on Fight Road next to the general, general commercial base district. And then one on the northeast at the entrance to the single family neighborhood. These are detailed elevations of what the townhome and materials, townhome, townhome materials would be and the color palettes. There's two examples here. And then where we are with the project right now. So this is where I'd like to invite Kevin to come up and speak, answer any of your questions or to add anything that I missed. You know, our team is residential developers. We're not going to be building any of the homes and no commitment has been made at this point to any home builder. So under the PD requirements, following approval, should, should we get it? Unless a buyer reapplies, they would have to seek approval for any revisions. So in other words, the townhome product that you see, the elevations, the design plan, the required common space, all that is in the PD right now would be approved. And then any builder or whoever buys these lots will need to adhere to those conditions. And if anyone wanted to change that, they would have to come back before the P and Z and then this body to, to get, to get changes. With that, I'll have Kevin to come up and speak.
And same thing, Kevin, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kevin Stuckey. My address is 3228 Maro Neil, M A R O N E A L, Houston, Texas, 77025. I'll be happy to answer questions about the, the townhome development. Currently, we've not committed to any builder. We, we do know that the product would be, that would be built would be these townhomes unless a buyer came in and made a change. And they have to come back through planting and zoning, come back through city council to make that change. So where we stand today, we're very confident that this, this product would be the product that would be delivered unless someone chose to make that, that, those changes. I really don't have anything further. I'll be happy to answer questions, though.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. All of you, we, we may have some questions when we get to it. Let us do the public part of this and then we'll come back for questions and comments from council. So with that, we'll move forward in the public hearing. Wish, asking for those in the audience who would like to speak in favor or against this proposed request. You can give your name and address for the record and you have three minutes to speak. I do, we, I know we have two people that had signed up to speak and I think both of them are getting up now. So just give us your name and address for the record and I think we'll have the clock on both sides. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. My name is Fran Goundry, 8020 Serenity Drive. I am a resident in Tranquility Lake Estates, which is adjacent to this undeveloped property. And yes, on, on Tuesday, May 9th, we did have a meeting with the developers, which was a productive meeting. It was a very transparent meeting and we did appreciate their time. But there were some concerns that kept coming up in the conversation. One was this plan for 109 townhomes in this very dense piece of property. It seems a little bit much in that small section of, of property. The increase in traffic was a concern. The idea that these were a fee simple home, which we as residents didn't understand that until they explained that these were properties that would be leased. We were always under the impression that these would be properties for sale. We were also concerned about the security, which they've addressed in the prior presentation. Some of the suggestions that the community members met there, there was nine of us there. And some of the members had mentioned some possible considerations for this development. We're not in opposition for the development. We are in opposition, however, if it is a leased property and for the number of buildings that they're planning to build on the property. We asked for them to consider a smaller number of these townhomes, similar to the one that they showed you where there were two townhomes or three, but the three and the four, it's, I think we can look at a different option for that mixed development that they talk about. We recommended 97, but we see in the past records that there was a 54 that was suggested. And we feel that all of them are very cookie cutter. We are a small subdivision of 23 homes. We are then going to be sandwiched in between townhomes that are fully leased on the very, I don't know what that's considered, east of us, around the retention pond. And then again, now on the opposite side. Our homes are of high value. Their prices keep going up. Our property taxes keep going up as well. But what we're asking is that there is a consideration for a reduction in the number of townhomes that are to be built and that these are not necessarily for leased homes, that they are for sale. We just don't want the property value of what we have in our community of Tranquility Lakes to go down in value. And we would appreciate your consideration for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Second request for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. We did get another request in to speak. You can speak now or you can speak to the actual new business item that comes up behind it, either one. Thank you for being here tonight. And same thing, just give us your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Hall and my home is at 8009 Serenity Drive in Pearland. My last presentation here, I agreed with the development of the townhouses and has my colleague here, Frances, she more likely cover some of the ideas that you were addressing in terms of the density of the townhouses. If it could be like, or instead of the 109, it could be like 97. It's just a little concern, as I previously stated in my last address here, that I am a person who is like strongly, you know, environmentally concerned. And I just picture that if you guys gonna do all of this development, what about the, you know, a little humor to the whole thing? That what about those animals that we're gonna disrupt their homes? They're gonna be right over in my, in my front door looking for a place to rest. So based on that, I'm just saying something that comes across in terms of my, it has to do with the acreage for the 109 lots. If you look at the proposal, the application, application that was made, I asked, there were some questions that I need to ask in how those different areas that they had addressed. I put question mark like the acreage or, let me see if I can. It is here that. Anyway, I, and I lost on that part. But this was just that in the breakage of the different, for the different areas that they're gonna build, there was one that has to do with the streets and all of that. There are question marks as to how many acreage they're gonna allot to that, to those spaces. So I think that is pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you for that. We'll last, make another call, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And last, last attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. All right, seeing none, we will move forward to questions from council that came up. I will ask the question that was proposed with first, first person who, I guess it was the HOA president about leased. So I'll ask, is this going to be a 100% leased neighborhood? Or is this going to be sold to the public? How's that gonna look?
At this point, we've not made that determination. We've, we've not committed to any builder. Under the zoning, it, the units could be leased. They could be sold individually. Buildings, units of, of three and four can be sold. Let's remember that an individual property owner can lease his home. No, it's no different with townhomes. So could you have owners living there and owners who chose to lease their, their units? Yes, we could. But today, there's no commitment that it would be built for sale or for lease.
Mr. Coker, I just, I'd like to make a, just a determination. I mean, from a legal perspective, can we prohibit? I'm not, and I'm not talking about a single family rental all project. That's, that, that is a consideration that we need to discuss. But if an individual bought a, a unit, are they allowed by law? Could we prohibit them from leasing in there?
No, we cannot do that. It'd be an infringement on a, on a fundamental property, right?
Okay. And I, you know, I, I'll just give you my perspective. I've mentioned this before, from a single family rental perspective, which is a category in the, in the marketplace. If we're going to have an SFR, that I would prefer it to be one single reserve. That way, if and when the exit strategy of someone wanting to sell units, they would have to sell all units to, to kind of an institutional investor. So it keeps it all under one, one roof as opposed to individual units, you know, out there. So under lot and block, I would prefer it to be, you know, sold to the general public. Again, I don't think we can prohibit somebody from leasing a unit. At least legally, we couldn't. I don't know what the HOA could say, not this HOA, the HOA within could say on that. Even that, I think is pretty limited in what they could say on being able to, to limit someone from, from leasing. So with that, I'll open it up for questions and comments. Remember Cam Car?
I just, I'd like to get a couple of items out there, Martin. We go to the enhancements discussion here because I, I think there were a couple of things that I had curiosity about. The one that kind of had the chart, there you go. So if we didn't go this PD route, what would be the masonry requirements as it stands today? Obviously, they're looking to agree to something, I guess, at a higher standard than what we would have.
So for the townhome, home component, there would not be a requirement because that's a residential and our facade standards are typically only for commercial purposes. On the retail, it would be 100% masonry, but that masonry could also include glass, which I believe their proposal at 80% is only for, what they're discussing is masonry is only the actual brick portion, not the glass portion of the.
Let me ask a question then. So we saw a bunch of images that had what looked like masonry in some renderings and drawings, like something like this, which I, I can't tell, looks like stucco on top of brick, on top of a nice, or a nicer than usual garage. We don't have the ability to enforce this on this townhome.
I would say that our current townhome district standards don't set a minimum precedent for masonry.
And then question for Darren. Can we even enforce that? I know some of the state regulations have changed. Can we even enforce, even if we had enhanced ABCD? Could a very crafty builder or user possibly go pound sand?
It's all gonna depend on how much detail is in the PD. And if the details are in the PD, we can hold them to that.
I'm information seeking right now. We don't have a builder selected. We don't have plans, like we have this, but is this for sure being built? What this looks like on the screen? Or could that change depending on builder, ABCD comes along?
A builder could, could elect to, to make a, a change. He would have to come back in through P and Z and back through you.
We, we are not making a determination yet if this is gonna be a build to rent, whereas the mayor said, single family for rent component.
Correct.
And lastly, where's the water going on this site? One of the, the members of the community brought up the, the density. And drainage has been my favorite word for a long time. And now we're spending a lot of money in this corridor, I believe, on some of our projects. Where, where's the water generally going when it rolls off the site?
Okay, I can answer that question.
Yes, sir.
So it has two different outfalls. The northern five acre, which was a part of original Tranquility Lake section four, that has stormwater system built within that Serenity Drive and outfalls into the existing pond on this side, that big Tranquility Lake pond, yes.
It's going east.
Going east.
Towards the people that are existing.
Yes, that's correct. And the south, that square part, which is about 10 acre. So in 2003, City and the mud or the developer at that time entered into agreement to provide detention for that lot, that 10 acre. So we have only 3.7 acre feet of detention available for that. The rest of all needs to be provided onsite.
All right, great.
And, and we have a stormwater system on Fight Road that collects the flow and drains into the same Tranquility Lake pond.
Sounds like we have a plan. It's better than what we mostly get here. I've.
That is correct. It's already been established through the mud.
Kevin, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm, I'm real stuck on the single family for rent. You know, we have not worked together, just for the record. Kevin is in the, the industry, as is our mayor. Have never worked with Kevin professionally, don't have any relationship, but I, I know of him, he knows of me. Kevin, you know how I feel about housing, you know, I feel about the American dream. I'm dedicated to it. I want it to happen. I have a lot of hangups. And if I don't have a better answer than maybe on the single family for rent, I don't know that I'm gonna get there. Based on the renderings, we can't even enforce them regardless of builder, ABCD. We had a gigantic discussion last year with Sullivan Brothers, who worked really, really, really hard, got a great product. And I want to say there was one or two other deals that we more or less spiked because we thought it wasn't gonna be to this caliber. And I, I just, I'm gonna struggle. So I'm just telling you straight away, I appreciate that you guys have gone to the neighborhood. You have listened and we've talked about that. I desperately want to vote yes on one of your deals, but I just don't know that I'm gonna get there unless I have a more defined answer. I really believe we've got young families, we've got families, divorcees, people who are, are single, just like homeownership. So that's just where I'm at.
Remember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, can you clarify, can we tie the, the renderings into the PD or not? Because I'm hearing two different things.
Yes, you can. If, if it's in a PD, that's essentially when you do a PD, you're doing, you're, it becomes sort of a negotiating, your negotiation where you're creating your own special zoning ordinance for that particular development. And so you can deviate. And, and you can also require things that you would not ordinarily be allowed to require because of other provisions of state law that would prevent us from doing so. But when you do it through a PD, that's a negotiation process. And once approved, we could enforce those.
Okay, is that, did you hear something different?
Well, the only thing is, generally speaking in builder world, if a municipality says something around materials, generally speaking, we're now told that they cannot regulate materials. But I am not aware, and this is informing to me, if there is a mutual negotiation, we can hold their foot to the fire. But in a general speaking, builders and developers are told that now cities can't regulate materials.
Correct. So our general facade requirements across the city, if this was not in a PD and they came in and did a townhome and, and had town, built single family, built in your neighborhood, they could build it all out of wood. Nobody would, could say a word about it. We couldn't enforce that. They could build it all siding. We can't enforce that. That's what you're talking about. But because it is a planned development, but for the planned development, you don't have zoning, then it's a negotiated. And it's a negotiated zoning change. Therefore, those have survived the law that was changed. I think it was two, one session ago. And so, yeah, so I think, and it, and more and more cities are opting to do those types of things as well as development agreements. If you have a development agreement, you can tie facades to a development agreement. So other cities are doing that as well. So just trying to clarify that.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. And I guess if this was gonna be a, a neighborhood built to rent, I would think that there'd be more efficiencies. I, I can't see somebody buying this without coming in and wanting to do, the, the utilities different, the streets different. And I don't know, the, the last couple we've saw, you can, you can look at a site plan and tell what's what. So anyway, I, I think, I, I like the renderings. I think it's a good product. Is there any, I guess, how'd y'all arrive at this density number? And is there any, any, any room to adjust that? And then also any, I guess, what's your pro forma on the price point for these?
On the unit value price point?
Correct.
Be in the three fifty range. And there's, there, the price, the price for the land, the cost of development, we really can't afford to give up any units. And we, we actually have given a couple when working on the site plan from where we started. But, you know, let us, let's understand rental. The rents here start at twenty-five hundred dollars a month. This isn't a low-end neighborhood. And that's, you know, it's, that's where housing is today. And we, we look at, you know, what's, what's pushing this cost? What's pushing the, the demand for housing with rates as high as they are? Why do we still see a demand? Well, you go back into COVID time and we had two million, two point four million households created in two thousand and twenty-one. Housing starts were under a million that year. Housing starts were one point four million last year. They're, they're projected to be one point four million this year. So we're trying to make up a million dollar, million dollar, million household count shortfall in housing. Does that impact us locally? It does, especially in a community like Pearland. People, people want to move to Pearland. They have great schools, great community services. You know, the mayor talked about the public works, talked about the first responders. People look at that when they make a decision. So that's, that's what's driving the demand. Do, do we wish we could have, to deliver a, a much more affordable product? Yeah, we wish we could. But the, the costs in today's market don't enable us to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Remember Cade?
Um, can you go to the amenities screen, please? On the amenity plan, you mentioned that you didn't have the builder yet, but for these amenities, would they have to keep those as well?
Correct. They're part of, part of the PD.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Sorry. So I'm having a hard, hard time understanding this. You guys are gonna get the entitlements and then you guys are gonna go look for a developer, correct?
We'll look for a builder. We'll, we'll develop it.
Okay. And you guys are not sure if you guys are gonna have a leasing office and start leasing these things or selling them? Can you, because I'm really confused.
We'll, we'll sell the lots to a building company. It's their choice whether to sell it as individual products for sale or to build it for rent.
So essentially, a equity group can come in and buy the entire hundred and nine lots and build them and rent them.
That's true.
Okay.
Let's, let's understand a rental community. Why that's not something to be afraid of. It's not something to be worried about. Because if that equity group comes in, this development, they're getting ready to spend forty million dollars to deliver the, the townhomes. To buy the land and to build the units will cost them about forty million. They can't afford to rent it for cheap. They can't afford to let it go down in, in, you know, in maintenance. That's their investment. They're there. They typically, and our, we have done build to rent previously. What we do and what, following the path of most of the HO, most of the BTR developers, you form your own property owners association. You are the property owner. You do have tenants join that association or have them as elected officials of the association. So you have tenant input. But that entity ensures that that community is well taken care of. So we're not worried about, does the backyard get mowed or does the front yard, you know, have a sprinkler system? Do people take care of their houses? The owner takes care of the houses. That's, that's the value of a for rent community.
So I'm sure you're familiar with the project they're building down on two eighty-eight, going down towards Iowa Colony. It is a complete rental home community. And sir, I can tell you, there's nothing quality about that. And, and sir, hold on. Sir, I can also tell you, I've dealt with equity guys. They do not care about their community. All they care about is the bottom line. Now, I'm not completely against your project. All I'm saying is, if it's going to be flipped, if I cannot get the comfort feeling that this is going to be individually homeowners, I agree with council member Cam Carr. I would like to see families live in there, but not an equity group coming in, building these things at one time and then renting them. That is my opinion.
Let me, let me make sure I understand. Who do you think's gonna live there if they own it? I will.
Sir, I will tell you, people who own property in your res, in your community tend to be more involved. Believe me, when I ran for election, I know what happened in Southern Trails and, and Shadow Creek Ranch. People who have a vested interest in a home will be involved in our community. That is a big difference. Again, I'm not against a rental community, but again, what you're telling me is not what you're really gonna end up doing at the end. I don't get that comfort feeling. I'm not saying you won't, sir. All I'm saying is, I don't have that comfort feeling.
Remember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. So Kevin, I'll, I'll maybe have a little bit different opinion. It's no secret that I, I am a renter. Sold my house a couple of years ago and have been renting since. And I, I just had a new neighbor move in recently. Graduated PhD in chemical engineering, working for Dow Chemical. He lives in the unit beneath me. And we are called Townhome Apartments where I live. And his girlfriend moved here also from College Station. And I was talking to him. He said, you know, I'm very glad that Pearland has this type of product because we're moving down here looking for our, you know, permanent home if we wanna live here or something that gives us the opportunity to try out Pearland. And he said, I really like this place. We came here from College Station. We were just blown away, you know, with the, the access to everything, you know, right off of two eighty-eight. And so I, I think that there's a place for this. I, I don't have a lot of consternation if it as a rental product, because I think that there's a need for that. Particularly given the type of industry that we have in the city. I meet people constantly who are coming here because they are, you know, PhDs or MDs working in our hospitals or the, the, you know, manufacturing facilities we have, engineers, people of very high intellect and, 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 you know, presumably net worth that come here and are looking for a, a transition product, which, you know, there's a lot of turnover in established neighborhoods like Shadow Creek also, where they maybe eventually do buy and then go to some other community because they're moving around from company to company. And so now they may or may not hold on to that home that they've purchased. And a lot of those homes, I know for a fact, in Shadow Creek are now rentals. And there's not any issues there. I mean, for a lot of them, they're turning them over to people who are, you know, of similar, I guess, life stature. But I think I may have already, in previous conversations with previous discussions about previous products, mentioned that I'm not a super fan of just kind of the, the aesthetic. And I think member Cam Carr touched on the, another product that came before us that kind of set a standard and would like to see a little bit more, I don't know, creativity or, or kind, you know, some, yeah, some architectural, you know, enhancement, you know, that just makes it look and feel a little bit nicer. The aerial earlier of that other community, it did look just kind of like very, it looked like a, a movie set or something like that. It didn't seem like a really homey place. But I can also appreciate, you know, the green space and the, the trails that you're putting throughout the community. So I, I think there's, you know, there's things that I like about this. There's things I don't like about this. I wish the, the product maybe wasn't as dense. But I understand you, you've gotta make the, you know, the math work on your end. But as far as the, the rental, you know, aspect, I suppose you'll come to that determination. I, I guess it sounds like, and I would probably generally agree that it would be better if they were for sale, but it's not gonna hold me back from supporting. I just, again, wish that the product had a, a little bit, you know, more, what I would say, thought put into the aesthetic. So I don't know, a little bit different, I guess, viewpoint. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Remember Coza?
Thank you, Mayor. Darren, as far as tying to the PD, the corner here for the future retail, we've had issues time and time again with neighborhoods built in the seventies, eighties where a piece of land was left vacant for future development. And we're looking at approximately a hundred and nine units right here. So that's potentially a hundred and nine different groups of folks that could come in and go, I don't like this on the corner. I don't like that on the corner. As far as being able to tie this development on the corner to say seventy-five percent of the development, is there anything we can do in the PD to say that that needs to be developed? Once seventy-five percent's crossed, as far as the development is done, anything along that line?
So you're, you're, you're talking tie the development threshold to, to the timing of the development of the corner?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And Lawrence, I'm gonna tap into your knowledge, but did we not do that on a PD on colon?
Yes, sir. We recently did that. Well, I think it was on Magnolia, where we had recently done that. So as it stands right now, the phasing plan in this PD just says it is future commercial to be developed when the market allows as the last phase. If that's a concern of the body, then you can amend or only pass it with an amendment. And, you know, if you, if you wanted it to happen after fifty percent of the homes or thirty percent of the homes or whatever number you think is appropriate, you just have to amend the phasing plan accordingly.
I mean, I, I remember, I think it was on Dixie Farm and Pearland Parkway, there was a retirement community that we tied it to phase two or phase three, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir. There, that was an instance in that PD as well.
Cause I, I don't know if there's any support at the DIAS, but these pieces of land always seem to give us a heartache down the road. CUP comes up for a gas station. Next thing you know, you got everybody in here that lives in the development complaining about what it is. So I'd be willing to put up amendment to say, once the property is seventy-five percent developed, that the corner lot there for the retail would be under, be under construction if there's any support for that.
Any other questions, comments? I know member Cam Carr had a, had a follow-up.
Martin, can we pull up the, the rendering again? I just wanna kind of point something out more so for the colleagues and I guess the public discourse. So all of these lots are coming in twos and threes and fours. Just so you guys know, the, the top forty builders, some of them do this product, not everybody. It provides a nightmare from an HOA perspective, because you have to use a special set of documents that you wouldn't use for a single-family home that just one person. And the product can at times be hard to deal with. In my career so far, I've only worked with one builder that does this. Out of, are we like ten? One that I did see do it, did only two, not threes and fours. Just because it, it's easier from a construction point of view. This is more complex. So I'm just, my concerns are, we hear, well, it might be sold individually to families or it could be sold to a group, but there's not a ton of builders in my experience that want to go and do this type of product. Not say that they don't exist, but by and large, if you're doing a townhome, it's usually a standard home, townhome, maybe it's with two. So this is a little bit different. I'm actually kind of surprised we're seeing this. I just kind of wanted to add that as just from my professional background. You know, and I think that consideration is out there. Is this gonna be for sale or is this gonna be for rent? Just a little bit of color, so to speak.
Mayor, I just wanted to ask if Jennifer would like to respond to what was said.
Yeah, thank you. As the ownership of that corner track, we won't be able to commit to a definitive timeline of development. You know, today in today's climate, a bank wouldn't lend on a speculative building there. There's plenty of vacant space in Pearland. The last thing that we would wanna do is go in and start construction on something because a PD document tied us to it because of a phasing of what's around it. The market should tell us when that pad is ready. The market should, by the success of what goes on behind it. So, you know, as much as I want to be amicable and agreeable and let's get across the finish line, I, I can tell you, our group won't do that.
I bet you were afraid I was gonna say, I would only say yes if you take that cell phone tower.
I, I knew the tower was gonna come up and the pine tree and, but darn.
Remember Barry? Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, last but not least, I guess, here, Mayor. Yeah, Jennifer, you've come to us with, you know, many different products and they've always been very nice. Unfortunately, in this particular case, I'm looking at the, looking at the actual rendering. Well, let's, let's just go back to the, the site itself. I personally would like to see more green space available. I thought there was gonna be more of a walking trail around the property and stuff like that. I don't necessarily see that in this particular rendering. The percentage of siding in the product, to me, lends itself to, you know, faster-than-usual degradation and things of that sort. I would like to see more masonry, stucco, you know, tile roofs kind of stuff, you know. Thirdly, the fencing. I, I personally like the wrought iron deal. I like the masonry fence, the wood fence. I would say a no to. I would, you know, as a PD, if this PD were to get approved, I would have to, I would have to define those stipulations on the product. And I think that, you know, the quality that I envisioned is probably a little bit more than what you envisioned for the quality of the product when it comes to, you know, the look and feel of the area. You know, I know this area very well. I lived, I didn't live very far from it when I moved here to Pearland and Silver Lake. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at on that. I just, I wish it was a little bit more upscale than, than what it's portraying in the rendering. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay. Any other last follow-up questions? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing and move to new business item number two. Mr. Cam Carr, would you present that on the table, please?
Mr. Colme, I mentioned one thing about the, about the walking trails. That was, that was not the landscape plan that was up. That was an illustration. There is a walking trail that, that goes around the entire property. So it just was not shown on that illustration. It's in the PD though. Martin's, Martin's looking for it.
This is a hundred percent masonry product. I mean, it, it, this is, is that correct? It's a hundred percent masonry.
Was it stucco? It's not stucco, is it? Tardy?
Tardy panels, yes.
Which is masonry.
As a fire rating, that's.
While, while it is masonry, I, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Cam Carr?
Consideration possible action, first reading ordinance number two zero 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 M dash two four eight.
Second. We have a motion, a second. We've had staff report, questions, comments from council. Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
No.
Member Potem Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes four to three.
With that, we'll see it on second reading. Maybe an opportunity to clean some of it up before we come back with the second reading. Thank you for that. We'll move to public hearing number three. hearing number three. Where's Joel? Joel, we'll just turn this to you. Public hearing first of two required public hearings on the FY 2023 Community Development Block Grant or CDBG allocation from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. With that, turn it over to staff.
Mayor, we're going to switch pucks real quick. I think we're having a technical problem. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we've got our screen back. So this is the, as you mentioned, first public hearing for our FY 2024 allocation from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Our CDBG grant program is in its 17th year, starting in October. So we've gotten our allocation notice from HUD, and we'll begin to proceed with the planning process. I want to be able to cover a few basic aspects of the program for new council members and those in the public that might not be familiar with it. But, so bear with me if you hear some things that some of you may have heard in the past. But this allocation comes to us, as I mentioned, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's part of their entitlement jurisdiction funding program that's been around since 1974, I believe. And with the HUD Act, that allows cities that are over 50,000 in population to receive an entitlement allocation based on a formula that produces the dollar amount that we in other cities around the country and states receive. So when we became an entitlement jurisdiction in 2006, we were able to receive our funds directly from HUD. We were before that receiving it as a sub-recipient of Brazoria County. And the program's been fairly successful over the years. It does come with some spending restrictions, but it is, at the same time, a pretty discretionary opportunity for us to spend funds in areas that represent the needs where low to moderate income aspects of the community are concerned, and in fulfilling some emergency and urgent need issues that arise from time to time. So I mentioned that allocation methodology, there are two ways HUD gives money out to entitlement jurisdictions, Formula A and Formula B. The only difference between the two on the screen really is that Formula B is designed to have an impact on larger, older cities with older housing stock. So that pre-1940s housing stock characteristic is what separates us from cities like Houston, Dallas, but mostly east coast cities that are older in nature and scope. So you'll see the allocations going to those communities be much higher than those that fall in the Formula A category. So that kind of gives you an idea of how we get our funds in that regard. So over the last 17 years, we've received about $4.4 million directly, with the exception of about $300,000 that was between the city and Brazoria County, kind of a negotiated issue. It fell, it fell kind of on the line between our sub-recipient status with Brazoria County and our entitlement status. But ultimately, they gave us those funds, and we were able to take those funds and use them actually for the expansion of the NAP Center back then. But just to give you an idea of what things look like now, of that $4.4 million, we have about $1.8 million that's active, and that means we've spent the difference of those funds. And right now, of that $1.8, we've drawn down about $1.3, close to $1.4 million, and have $484,945 in our available balance. So for those of you that have been around for a while, if you recall last year and the year before that, we had some delayed allocations with our HUD entitlement funds, and we were also slow spending. We're starting to catch up with that. So we're doing a good job of getting the money out on the street. We had some reimbursements that were pretty much delayed by HUD, and we were able to go back and draw those funds down. So we're making more progress as far as spending down, and we want to get to the point where our actual allocation ties directly into our annual spending, and we're getting much closer to that. So just to give you an idea of how the funds have generally been allocated, we've gone through several iterations of five-year consolidated planning processes that kind of give us what HUD would consider to be a long-term way of foreseeing how the funds impact the community. And so we've got several nonprofit agencies that have benefited from the funding in ways that have given us the ability to meet certain unmet needs in the community. The Neighborhood Center, Counseling Connections for Change, Actions of Brazoria, and some newer sub- recipients, the Seva Clinic, and Gathering Outreach are two that have come online in the last few years. But rental assistance, mental health services, helping some of the older age facilities with some expansion work and some improvements, and helping with childcare, aftercare services that really kind of came about after COVID, the need to help put working families back to work that were facing economic challenges with their jobs, and trying to find childcare in situations that was an impediment for them to go back to work. Gathering Outreach has helped us a great deal in that regard, and helping the Seva Clinic maintain some solvency as far as keeping their medical supply cabinet available to the extent that it serves the community. And they're part of the National Association of Free and Charitable Clinics. So doing this has a, has a big impact on their overall work. Couple other projects that we're working on, of course, the Neighborhood Center expansion of that patio area, enclosing that, maybe rooftopping that with some other features is going to help expand the program space. The dollar amounts I mentioned earlier, as far as the available fund balance, some of that money is unprogrammed. So as we get through the design phase of that and a clearer picture of what construction costs look like, we may need to add more funds to that project. But for right now, I think about $404,000 has been allocated towards that. And we're about to enter the design phase now. And then we've got the home repair program. It used to be the Housing Enforcement and Rehabilitation Opportunities Program when it was in the Fire Department. But I think the good work that the code enforcement entities done have left us with a program that really can focus on the actual home repairs only. And it's transitioned over into community development, and they're doing a good job of bringing that back out of kind of an idle characteristic due to COVID. So I think we've got about five or six homes that have been completed this year, and another five that are on the horizon. So we're getting back to that 10 homes per year annually that we want to make sure we touch on. And that program limits available resources to 15,000 for single-family owner occupied, low-income residence, unless, of course, there's a major issue that requires override of that amount to accomplish something that is beyond the dollar amount that we cap it at. And sometimes there are situations where we've got to replace a roof, we've got to replace an HVAC, we've got to do foundation work, and all simultaneous to make sure that a structure is solid and sound, and that the inhabitants aren't facing a situation where they're in a danger, dangerous place. So looking at this coming year, we are scheduled to receive $466,000 from HUD. Those funds do have some caps and limitations on them. So every entitlement allocation we get for CDBG comes with a 20% cap for program administration. From time to time, we do max that out. Last year, I believe, we decided to take a lesser amount to get more of the money out in the community as needed. But we are facing the reality that we need effective staff and program administration resources to make this program work. And we are hiring a new employee that begins June the 5th. And we'll need to make sure that we've got adequate resources to cover our capacity. So I believe that the recommendation this year will include that we max out the program admin cap. And then there's a social services cap that limits that spending to 15% of the annual allocation. And that's about $69,000 for, $70,000 for FY '24. And that's the money we give out to the local nonprofit agencies every year. Another characteristic I discussed, but PDC and staff have kind of annually revisited if the economic development borrowing allowance is something we want to tap into. And we just haven't really found that to be something that's needed in Pearland, particularly because we've got a low poverty rate, a low unemployment rate, and the job creation and other characteristics associated with that requirement might be difficult for a city like us to meet those requirements. So it's still always available to us, and we'll just kind of keep our eye on that community characteristic and see if that's something we want to endeavor into in the, in the future. Couple more slides, almost done, Mayor. So one thing I want to cover is the income limits. Those can change every year for FY '23. It's looking like it's increased about $3,400 from last year, and the median family income level for Pearland is $111,400. And 80% of that is where we are capped out at as far as our ability to assist a specific household. And that's a $17,900 increase from FY 2021. So we are seeing that increase and probably in line with the local economy and what's going on nationwide as far as wages, inflation, and other, other aspects that drive this, this income limit. And just to give you an idea of how that affects us, if we wanted to do an area benefit project, something that would have an impact on drainage for a particular neighborhood or census block group, that is something that would require us to put a project in an area that is comprised of 45% or more of those low to moderate income families that are 80% or less, where the local metropolitan, statistical area income is concerned. We're doing a lot of this with the GLO funds that we're getting and other bigger dollars that are bringing in the kind of projects that affect larger areas. And it's something we do have to deal with when we put something in a, in a community. Lastly, just want to kind of give a brief overview of some tentative planning schedule points. So we, this first public hearing is really just designed to kind of kick things off, provide some basic information for the public and for you all as council to kind of chew on. We'll see another public hearing in June that'll kick off the first portion of the comment period. We'll wrap that comment period up 30 days later on July the 27th. And ongoing throughout that whole time, we'll be working on the action plan development, presenting council and the public with information about recommendations for spending. And by the 14th of August, we'll bring a action plan for consideration and possible action to the body, and submit that plan to HUD on August the 16th to meet those requirements. And that ends my presentation. I will pass back to council.
All right. Thank you, Joel. With that, we will open it up to the public. If you wish to speak on this public hearing for the CDBG grant block funding, this year's available funds, $466,162. Second attempt, those wishing to speak on this grant funding request. Third and final time, those wishing to go to the podium, give your name and address for the record, wish to speak. Seeing none, we'll turn it to city council for questions, comments. Open it up to the floor. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. Joel, I'd like to tell you thank you. You always do a fine job, and I like the job that you do for our community, helping folks out in need. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Sorry, Joel, just, you said $15,000 for a single-family home. Does that include mobile homes, or is it just?
It does not. So our, our guidelines that we developed long ago excluded, it didn't exclude mobile homes. It basically said that they need to be permanently affixed to a foundation. So it depends on the situation. There could be a case where there's a mobile home that's properly, permanently affixed to a foundation, which is very rare. But in that case, we could help that.
And that's at our discretion?
Correct. It's up to the local entitlement to come up with our own policies and procedures as to how we implement the program, manage it, and comply with those rules. And we kind of look at the surrounding cities. We know which cities not to follow and which ones to look at carefully and consider. But over the years, we've come up with a good standard that I think is working very well. We haven't had any requests, I believe, to help with a mobile home this year, maybe one in the last several years that I'm familiar with, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Cam Carr?
Joel, can you talk to them a little bit? You said that we need to hire a new employee around administering some of this. Can you talk to me about that a little bit?
So, you know, our capacity in my office has pretty much been, you know, solely relegated to myself, with the exception of some historical FTEs that have been in more of an administrative assistant role. But I think we're looking to make sure that, that capability is more knowledgeable and resourceful and experienced when it comes to this kind of work, so that we can make sure that as the funding sources give us more money, we've got the adequate, adequate capacity we need to deliver a good compliant project, product to the community. And so we're doing so by collapsing some FTEs in a way that don't add to the overall FTE of the office, but that'll also be paid for with grant funds. So there should be limited, if any, exposure to the general fund.
The last item, are we rerunning the people that were the recipients last year for this year? Are there, are you anticipating any more changes?
I don't, and simply because when we established that five-year consolidated plan, we want to be able to meet the goals and objectives set forth in that plan over those five years. And if we make a change, we run the risk of interrupting that, unless we've got a situation where we've met the goal for a particular aspect, and we can move on to offering those funds elsewhere. But for the most part, we're going to stick to our guns.
Great, thanks. Great info.
Steph? Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, moving in that direction, we will end this documented public hearing. And Joel, as always, thank you for all that. More to come as we get to the second public hearing and move on. With that, we'll move to consent agenda. Mayor Proton, if you would please present items A through H. Let me back up. I have received a request to remove B, C, E, and F. Are there any other items to be removed? Or B, C, E, and F? All right. Mayor Proton, if you would present consent agenda items A through H, with the exception of B, C, E, and F.
Yes, Mayor. Consideration possible action on the consent agenda items A through H, omitting B, C, E, and F. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Proton Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to new business continued. Council input and discussion, Strategic Government Resources, SGR, present their independent audit regarding city, city's tax calculation process and development of best practices, best practice recommendations. With that, I'll turn it over to staff for any staff report, and then kick it to SGR.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Following the discovery of the tax valuation calculation error last year, the council moved forward with a processed, in February, it was managed by the council's audit committee to have SGR conduct an independent audit regarding the city's tax calculation processes and development of best practice recommendations. So we have here tonight with us Mr. Wendell Medford and Mr. Rodney Rhodes, and they're going to present their findings along with their recommendations. So at this point, I'll hand it over to, to their team.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Again, just give us your name and addresses for the record, and we look forward to it.
All right. Wendell Medford, with Strategic Government Resources, PO Box 1642, Keller, Texas, 76244. First of all, Mayor and council, thank you for having, having us here this evening. One of the things that I really enjoy about public service is a sense of community, and also watching transformation in action. So exactly what we're witnessing here tonight. So kudos to everyone here in attendance tonight. So the second piece of this, I want to thank Trent and staff for opening the doors to the community and being very open and transparent, transparent throughout this entire process. You know, it's one of these things where we work through, we work through things. He was able to connect us with the resources that we needed to get answers. So we're very thankful for that. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to my esteemed partner, Rodney Rhodes, who's been doing this in the finance arena probably since I was a young lad. And that's not a dig at you, Rodney. It just means that you're a seasoned veteran. So I'm going to turn it over to him to go, conduct a presentation.
Thank you, Wendell. I started just for clarification.
Thank you, Wendell. I started just for clarification when I was twenty years old. So I'm, you know, still a young pup, I think.
There you go.
First of all, I just want to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to do this. As Wendell said, this is a partnership with the council as well as your administrative staff and your finance department. And I greatly appreciate the opportunity. We're going to talk this evening about the timeline of events. I'm not going to go through all of the timeline, but I am going to touch on some fairly relevant timelines for your information. We've got some follow-up facts and communications that I want to touch on as well, and then talk about best practices, which we'll spend a lot of time on best practices recommendations, and then some other considerations for council as as the process unfolded. We did a, just by way of background, we did a fairly in-depth interview process, follow-up email process with not only staff internally, but we also did that with the Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office. We did that with the Harris County Tax Assessor's Office. And those were the primary outside contacts, given that the circumstances kind of surrounded them. Before I get started on the timeline of events, I just want to point out that your finance staff did an excellent job early on and throughout the process of asking questions, getting clarification, and asking more questions. They did a great job of doing that. I reviewed the email communication that took place throughout this entire process and and I want to give them kudos. There was no intentional deception that took place. I want to point that out. It was more of a communication breakdown. And I'll speak to that here in just a little bit. Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office, in my opinion, could have done a little bit better job in communicating with the city of Pearland on any changes, significant changes that took place. And there were significant changes that took place. I also want to point out that the issue was not with the not yet certified values that you saw. The issue were with was with more of the taxable values that were presented to the to the city as a whole. And we'll speak to the breakdown of that communication as well. But I do want to point out that the twenty, if you compare the twenty, fiscal twenty-two tax roll to the fiscal twenty-three tax roll, there was a marked difference in that tax roll. That should have raised questions and elevated some more communication. That did not happen. And so I just want to point that out as we go through this process and and through the timeline of events. As I said, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on each of the timelines, but I do want to point out some relevant timelines. April twenty-eighth, the Harris County Central Appraisal District hosted its annual tax assessors meeting. In that meeting, there was a discussion of changes to the way that presentation of information was going to occur. They went through that in great detail. They also provided some preliminary numbers. No one from the Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office was in attendance in that meeting. Want to point that out. May fifth, an email went out from the Harris County Central Appraisal District, again, discussing the changes, the potential changes, and they did that in an attempt to mimic the reports provided for certification purposes. They solicited feedback from the tax assessors. They did not receive any feedback from the tax assessors. July twenty-sixth, of course, you received your role. It included the certified estimate from the Harris County Central Appraisal District, which is allowable under SB two to provide certified estimates. Staff, again, immediately began asking questions and began a process of trying to get clarification as to why the tax rate dropped the way that it did. They were assured by the Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office that the numbers were correct and that everyone was seeing that as a result of the higher appraisal values. August eighth, of course, you held your, or you passed your resolution setting the maximum tax rate. You went through the, I'm not used to driving, so apologize. August seventeenth, you did the advertisement first reading. And then on August nineteenth, this is when things started getting a little bit interesting throughout the course of this audit process. August nineteenth, Harris County Central Appraisal District certified their role. They uploaded the information to the portal on August the thirty-first and emailed the tax assessors that the information was available to be uploaded with the certified numbers. Again, remember, when you received your your certified role on July twenty-sixth, that included a certified estimate. It was not the fully certified role. The certified role was made available on August thirty-first. You had already begun your process of going through and, I'm sorry, you had not begun your process yet of going through and passing the resolution on the maximum tax rate. The Brazoria County Tax Assessor went in on the thirty-first, downloaded the information, and the resulting factor was that the tax rate with the unused increment was seventy point seven three two eight five seven. That's about a little less than ten cents, less than what they what you had originally received on the twenty-sixth, which is significant for any city, especially for the city of Pearland. September thirteenth, you passed the, oh, excuse me, September thirteenth, you passed the resolution and and had the first reading. The twenty-seventh, the second reading, and you and your first day of the fiscal year began October first. Late October, as you know, you were working on a TERS, asked the Brazoria County Tax Assessor to provide an updated role. They did so, and that is when they discovered the point seven three two eight five seven. Now, I want to go back to the August thirty-one date. Had Pearland been advised of the change in the tax rate that was provided from July twenty-sixth, Pearland would have had time throughout their budget process to go back and amend its resolution, go through the first and second reading and the legal postings as required. You were not notified. You did not get notification of the change. Had that happened, you could have gone back and made that change, should you choose to have done so. I want to point that out. November one, again, staff receives the update. It has the higher tax rate in there as a result of the certified role from HCAD. And then staff, again, immediately started asking questions. They got answers that the numbers were correct. And during the course of the process, and I'll talk about this here in a minute, but during the course of the process, there was some communication back and forth between staff, Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office, and then also follow-up for myself through this audit process. November second, council was made aware of the of the situation. And on November seventh, the first meeting took place with staff and subsequent meetings thereafter. I want to stop there and ask if there are any questions before we go into other relevant facts.
Any questions from council at this point?
You made a comment about elevated tax rule issue. Can you dig into that a little bit?
I'm sorry?
You made a comment about elevated tax rule issue?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, I, I'm gonna, just about to get to that point, if that's all right.
Let me go to my next item.
Okay.
In your timeline, you talk about July twenty-sixth and that the city reached out or there was discussion. I don't, I don't know who contacted who. How would you characterize the thoroughness of those inquiries?
Of the inquiries from staff?
Somebody checked three times repeatedly.
Correct.
And then there's a city manager letter at some point when this is saying, you reviewed these numbers multiple times. And so I'm, I'm curious, what is the thoroughness? How would you characterize, somebody who's worked around cities and has seen other processes, how would you characterize that?
I would say that your staff, again, did a very nice job of reaching out and getting clarification. Some of the best practices recommendations will address how in the future staff can be better prepared for that. But I would say in general, staff did a great job of asking questions to the best of their ability and get and the answers that they received from the tax assessor's office was that they had looked at the numbers and triple-checked the numbers and everything looked appropriate.
I just, the public discourse, remember, we had this discussion, I want to say it was November or December, and we had copies of those emails. We talked a lot about emails recently. And those inquiries were one-line inquiries, one-sentence inquiries. I wouldn't characterize that as thorough.
I would characterize it as 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 thorough as the staff was able to. And you might also recall during the responses in those emails, they were generally one-line responses as well.
And the only reason I go, and going back to your point, is the items that are elevated tax rule issues, where we should be very easy to spot those jumping hockey sticks, they just weren't caught. And I, it sounds like we have a lot of blame in this scumbo to go around, but I still go back to, I feel that this is really a thoroughness issue. So go from there. Let me, let me go on your timeline before we get off that. You point out on the eight nineteen timeline, whose role is it to reach out to who? Obviously, Harris County uploads their numbers. Does an email go out to every entity that Harris County distributes information to? Does it only go to the assessor collector?
It, that email went out to the assessor collectors.
Oh, then, so Harris County sends it to Katie, whoever does their assessing, collecting, and the other jurisdictions that are are shared jurisdictions with cities.
They never, the, the email never went to the city of Pearland staff. I will tell you that. It only went to the assessor collectors.
Let me ask a question, adding more contextless. Or larger cities that are inside a county, do they get individual emails or does it just go Harris County Appraisal District and they just post something?
In my, in my thirty-five years of public sector, it has been a mixed bag. It depends on the relationship between the tax assessor collector and the city or county. If if most cities or counties have a good working relationship, when I say working relationship, I mean they are in constant communication with the central appraisal districts, then staff would have had an opportunity to pick that up. The city of Pearland has contracted with the Brazoria County Tax Assessor for over twenty-two years. They have relied, you have relied, on the information provided by them. And therefore, it, it, I won't say that staff has has been more hands-off, but I believe staff was not as engaged because of that relationship with the Brazoria County Tax Assessor.
Can we go back to your slide real quick, the one on the timeline? Because I'm just trying to understand. I think you're making an interesting point. I just want to make sure I get it.
Okay.
Go to the one in August.
August?
Sure. So August nineteenth, Harris County says, here's all our data, whether it's provided incorrectly or not. There's the data.
August thirty-one. August nineteen is when they certified. They uploaded the information on the nineteenth to their portal.
So for roughly like ten or twelve days, Harris County has the data, but for whatever reason, somebody doesn't click send. And so it never gets posted to all the different jurisdictions.
So the explanation that I received from the Harris County Central Appraisal District is it generally takes about ten to fourteen days, business days, to get the information pulled together and uploaded to their portal, which is why you're seeing the difference in the timeline.
And then, let me ask a question then. The budget that we generally discuss, when was that role presented? Because obviously, eight thirty-one, new data comes out, but we're working off of data from July or or sooner.
July twenty-sixth.
So you received the data on July twenty-sixth, and then on August eighth, you passed the resolution setting the maximum tax rate based on that July twenty-sixth role that you received.
In your learned experience, your thirty-five years, could somebody have seen the data on July twenty-sixth and thought that maybe something looked off?
Absolutely. And they did. And they asked questions.
The one-line questions. Okay. And so then on August eighth, for the two weeks between eight thirty-one and I guess September thirteen, the new data was out there, but we didn't receive it.
You never saw it. That's correct.
We asked at that time for, is there any updates?
No, sir. And and nothing was communicated to the city that there were updates.
The city manager at the time didn't know that either. They didn't.
To my knowledge, no.
I just wanted to get those data points out there. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions at this point? All right. Continue on, Rodney.
Thank you, sir. Want to talk about a few relevant facts that took place or that were discovered as a part of the interview process. In reviewing the two years worksheet, it became very, very clear that the HCAD values for FY twenty-three were zero, while the HCAD values for twenty, I'm sorry, for twenty twenty-two were zero, while the HCAD values for twenty twenty-three were one point six billion dollars. That should have raised a red flag and and spurred questions and follow-up questions by the part of the Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office, in my opinion. When you see things like that and you do a year-by-year comparison, and those kinds of numbers jump off the page, you should be able to ask those questions to get the answers, to figure out exactly what the differences are before they get loaded into the tax calculation worksheet. So I just want to make that point. The city of Pearland, again, asked questions and were assured that the numbers were correct and in fact, were told that they had triple-checked the numbers. Brazoria County Tax Assessor was notified by HCAD on August thirty-one. As I mentioned, there should, there, there would have been enough time to go back and pass a new resolution setting the maximum tax rate based on the new certified role, gone through the, the first reading and second reading and the publication process as required by law, before the budget got adopted. That did not happen. There was not communication from the Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office back to the city of Pearland of the discrepancy between what came out on July twenty-sixth and what came out on August thirty-one. Again, had the city of Pearland known about this, they could have gone back and made revisions accordingly, should they choose to have done so. And then in in my interviews with the Brazoria County Tax Assessor's Office, the question was asked, did you compare the July twenty-sixth with the certified estimate from HCAD with the certified role that came out on August thirty-first? Answer was no. I went on to ask questions of would there, should there have been some questions asked, given the discrepancy between the two numbers? Response was, it's not their responsibility to review the the certified estimates against the certified role. Their job is to load the numbers and make that, make those numbers available as the July, like they did for July twenty-sixth. I'll stop there and ask any que, or answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I'd like to just address that last point that you made. Did the tax assessor collector? Um, did the tax assessor collector make or reference that, I mean, I, it's not their, if you would, put those, put that slide back up. That it's not their responsibility to compare certified estimates to final certified roles. And then you just, you just made a comment that, um, it, it, it sounded like they know they've got a responsibility, but in this case, they, they either didn't do the responsibility or, um, just, just completely, they, they, they redid the worksheet, correct?
Yes, sir, they did.
So they, they, they received the certified role on August thirty-one. They immediately did a new worksheet.
Correct.
Did, did the tax assessor collector's office hint or say they knew at that point it was drastically different from the previous one?
They didn't disclose that they knew. But when you run the numbers and you compare them against the preliminary or the, the July twenty-sixth numbers.
It's drastically.
It's drastically different and that should have spurred some questions.
I would think especially since we asked multiple times and was even told, checked it three times, you would think when a certified, you know, a certified role actually came in, we've had multiple attempts, we've had multiple questions, I've checked it three times, yada, yada, yada. And then when this comes in, you would, you would think someone would drill into that and at least. And then, is it normal that when a certified role like this comes in this late? Now, I, I'm going to say normal. I think Harris County Appraisal District is the only appraisal district in the state that is this late with its certified role. So I, I'm, I guess I'm gonna, I, I guess it's about Harris County. But wouldn't, um, when the certified finally came in, that you would notify your taxing jurisdictions that are in that jurisdiction of something? Certified is in?
So I don't know what your contract says with the Brazoria County Tax Assessor. I, I don't know the specifics of that contract. As a contracting agency to the city of Pearland, my answer will be you would think that that contracting agency would at least alert the city of the, of the fairly large discrepancy between what came out July twenty-sixth and what came out on August thirty-one.
I will state, um, we had a meeting in, with the, um, audit committee as well as relevant staff, HCAD and Brazoria County Appraisal District, uh, shortly after we discovered, you know, the issue. So this was in early November. Um, and in that meeting, you know, we asked the, well, HCAD, where did you send this? We sent it to, um, uh, Brazoria County Tax Assessor Collector. And we didn't ask the date. We, we didn't know that date until we saw this. It was in August. We didn't ask that date. Um, but we did ask the tax assessor collector. I said, when you received the certified role, why didn't you forward that to the city? Because the certified estimate, I mean, I received the copy of the certified estimate. So the instant it comes in, it goes straight to staff and, and they get to work on that certified estimate. Um, but, and her answer was, I assume it's coming to you because the certified estimate's coming to you as well. That was her answer. So.
Right.
But I can, I can see that. I get that, especially when the other one came, but this one didn't.
Right.
So that's when we got commitments from HCAD and others that will receive all communication on that moving forward.
Yes, correct. And I, and I want to also point out that if you need to get, I've summarized what was in the report. So if you'd like to reference, uh, that particular piece of the conversation, it's on page six, seven, and ten of the report that you actually received, just as a reference.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this portion?
A follow-up to what the mayor just asked. Was communication in that process, communication covered in the meeting where there were no representatives from Brazoria County? Do you know?
The HCAD process?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it was.
It was. Okay.
It was, it was covered both at the April meeting and then in the July fifth email that went out.
Okay.
Okay.
On the first, the first bullet point, it says this should have prompted further investigation. Is that by us or by Brazoria County?
By Brazoria County.
Thank you.
In my opinion.
Thank you.
Any others down here? Cam car?
Uh, really quickly, um, I guess here's a slide nine. In your learned experience, sir, uh, on the last bullet, generally speaking, whose responsibility is it to compare estimates or compare values? I mean, generally speaking, how have you seen it done?
So again, I'm going to go back to my previous statement where, uh, the city of Pearland had relied on the Brazoria County Tax Assessor for twenty-two years. The reliance on their communication and given the numbers really is where I believe that the communication breakdown occurred between the tax assessor's office and the city staff.
Let me, let me ask that question a little differently.
Okay.
Uh, generally speaking, do cities of a certain size like us generally just rely on the assessor collector in your experience?
No, sir.
Why is that?
Um, because there is a, there is a inherent need in most finance shops to, uh, to see the information starting in April when the preliminary numbers are generally released. And then each month after that, and I'll talk to that on the best practices slide as well. But, but generally speaking, uh, there is a, a desire because there's more interaction between the tax assessor's office, staff, and the appraisal district. Um, and so, but again, given the, the time, uh, that you had been working with the tax assessor's office, uh, I believe there was more reliance on the information from them coming to the city.
Going back to your statement though of just asking of cities of a general size, they generally feel a need to go verify. And so it might align with the idea that the assessor collector handles their roles and we need to handle ours. Would that, would those two things dive?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
You, you said cities of a certain size verify their own data?
Correct.
And would that not seem to go with what the assessor collector here seems to be saying, which is, I, I provide this data, but you kind of buyer beware? I mean, isn't that just generally for cities of a certain size?
No, not necessarily. Generally, it's a, it's a hand-in-hand working relationship between the tax assessor collector's office and the city staff, um, when they are reviewing the numbers. And so because the tax assessor collector is the one running the calculations on behalf of the city, so the communication is more flowing, I'll call it, between staff and the, um, and the tax assessor collector. Also, it's more flowing between the appraisal districts and the staff.
Got it. Uh, going back to that comment that you said about the cities having their meeting, or sorry, HCAD had their meeting in April.
Right.
Were there other cities at those meetings, whether they be other jurisdictions? Do you know who else was in attendance or was it just assessor collectors?
I did not get the attendance list. I am not sure whether other cities attended or not. I, I am assuming that some other cities did, but I can't.
You don't have, can't verify. Um, and then you made a mention about the city attorney essentially identifying here. I guess it's in the fourth bullet here from the bottom or from the top. It has expressed an opinion. Darren, can you elaborate on that? Because if I'm remembering, and it's been, what, almost six months now, the discussion at the time that we had the first reading on September the thirteenth was this data's coming in super fast. We need to go with what we have. And what this fourth bullet is saying is if we had had new data, we could have made adjustments to our process. Is that?
Well, in September, it was way too late. You couldn't do anything in September. I think what it was saying is if the information had been communicated on August the thirty-first, once they did the new, uh, calculation worksheet but failed to notify the city, had the city been notified, we would have had time to meet the statutory requirements for republication uh, in the newspaper of the adjusted, uh, tax rate and still had time to take out action on it in September.
When would that timeline, just for the sake of the discussion, if we had roughly known, are we talking like September the first? Are we talking September fifth? I mean, the thirteenth is obviously the first meeting of September. But was there a general idea of when that data would have had to come to us?
Sure. So I've got pulled up what Darren sent me that helped put this timeline together, so I can just kind of walk through that. Um, so we had a budget public hearing, uh, that we held on August twenty-ninth. And so basically all the timelines you have to follow from that point forward. Um, we could have had another, uh, new public hearing that superseded that one. Um, we would have held it on September twenty-sixth. So it would have been running parallel basically with revising the tax rates and adjusting the budgets and those sort of things, um, at the same time. But we could have, um, held that public hearing and still met the statutory requirements that the public hearing occurred before the tax rate adoption itself.
We would have had one of those one, those one reading meetings. Is that what you're talking about?
I think we could have had all the correct readings we would have needed.
That is correct. We would, still would have had the two readings. And, uh, and of course, if the tax rate had been, uh, done, if we'd had appropriate worksheet and published it in that manner, uh, it wouldn't even be necessary to even have a tax rate public hearing. It would only be, be a public hearing for your budget. Um, which only has to be done prior to your second reading of the, uh, tax rate and for the budget.
Um, and then just one last item. Did you see any of the memos that were presented from the staff? Um, or the city manager in this process in September? There was this particularly one on, uh, the fifteenth, a little bit, two days after we, we did this first item. But did you, had you reviewed that?
From the city manager?
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Did you see the item on page six that I thought was particularly egregious? And I think the thing that got the most consternation, I'll, I'll go ahead and read it. I wish I had sent it up for the memos, but I didn't. Um, but I'll read that last bullet. Fourth, these are projections. As we learned in FY twenty-two, revenues can come in higher or lower than expected. Thus, as the city reduces reserves to the policy minimum, the fallout from a revenue shortfall will become more impactful due to decreased reserve. Of particular note in bold print, Harris County uncertified tax rolls, which will not be certified until after the budget and tax rate adoption. Even though we had rolls a month before this. Um, in general, last year Harris County over, sorry, overestimated in italics, the uncertified tax roll for numerous cities who found themselves with less property tax revenue over the rolls or finally certified after budgets and rates were adopted. Reason I think we have a new city manager is that is, I, I mean, that's the problem. We, we, we acknowledge we had the problem and what it could be. And we had a tax role that was good from Harris County for almost a month before that memo was written. And we went down the, we went down the primrose path. And I think that's the thing that I most galled about, um, in this whole process.
Yeah, and again, I, I can't speak of what took place internally other than what I, uh, reviewed as far as email correspondence. And I did see the memo, uh, that was written. Um, but I, I can't speak to the internal discussions.
I understand that. Thank you.
And, and I just, I want to clarify, that's, that's assuming the city manager and the staff on September the fifteenth actually had the certified role, which we didn't.
And Mayor, I don't want to quibble the point. I just want to say that there was a problem that they knew was very similar to what could happen.
I agree.
And there was not an inquiry between the fifteenth when Harris County sent their data.
And I, and I agree, uh, and I agree. But also want to make sure you, you made a statement just now as though the city manager knew the certified role existed. That's the way you, that's the way you presented with that. So no one on staff from the finance department to the city manager's office knew the certified role existed come, you know, August thirty-one. We found out the August thirty-one date through this process. Brazoria County, uh, Tax Assessor Collector's Office didn't tell us. HCAD didn't tell us. It was in this process that we found that out. Either here nor there, what we did ultimately in that process was the right thing to do. But I just want to make it note that no one at the city knew when that memo was written that it was. So yes, it was an unusually high number. And I think one of the things you're going to find in, uh, moving forward, you stop the process, period. Stop the process. And if somebody is not getting you the right answers, we scream from the high heaven to make sure that they get us the correct information. So I just want to make that note. Ms. Cade, you had a follow-up?
Mayor, I did. Um, I know when the tax assessor collector was here, she said that it was in her contract to calculate those values. Um, I know Pearland's in a unique, well, fairly unique position that we have three counties. And she said, I remember her saying that, it was in her contract to calculate, uh, that worksheet. So I'm, I'm wondering, when she said it was not her, I can't remember the wording now and the slide has changed. Let me see if, it's not her responsibility to, to do.
Compare the.
Comparing, I mean, so is that, is that right? I mean, she just calculates initially and it's just out of, gone for the, I mean, then I'm just curious.
So my takeaway from that conversation was just that. My role is to plug the numbers in and that's that. Um, but again, as a contracting agency with the city of Pearland, if you saw numbers swing that much, there should have been some, some questions asked.
If she triple-checked it, she must have thought there was something, well.
That's my point.
So, but from now on, we're going to get the values also, right?
Yeah, I think, um, we'll see in, in recommendations moving forward. But yes, uh, we get everything from HCAD, BCAD, and Fort Bend. We get all of that information. We get, um, any, both certified, certified estimates, certified. All of that will come directly here as well as who we're contracting with to, uh, to do the work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and we'll speak to that when we get to some best practice recommendations as well. So that's part of some of those recommendations. I did want to point out, it wasn't until November one, after staff requested the, the rerun of the, of the role or the role, uh, that they found out, uh, about the, about the discrepancy. And to my knowledge, no one on staff knew it until that date. We'll talk about, uh, spend some time on best practices, which I think, uh, will help hopefully set the stage for, uh, an instance like this to not happen again. And it's unfortunate that it did because it will impact, uh, the city of Pearland, uh, for years to come, not just for FY twenty-three. Um, so I do want to point out some of the best practices that hopefully will help as you go forward. Um, and then, and then we can talk about some other relevant findings as well. So, um, contract with the outside company. I know that contract is, is either in the works or has been signed with the third-party company to help you with those calculations. I think that's a great first step, uh, because it gets a third set of eyes on your, on your numbers uh, and allows you to have communication with that third party and better communicate that back to the, either the appraisal districts or to, uh, the tax assessor collector's office. I'm recommending that you train a minimum of two staff members in finance on the tax rate calculations. A minimum of two. I would recommend you do more, but given some staff constraints, two may be all you can do. I recommend two for the reason that if you have staff turnover, you have a knowledge transfer, uh, capability that will allow you to have the ability to continue with your staff that have the knowledge and skillset to better review numbers as they come in. And we'll talk about as they come in here in just one second. I recommend that your finance staff, uh, or your dedicated finance staff attend all central appraisal district meetings. Or all three central appraisal districts. In my experience over the years, those meetings are invaluable. Little bit boring sometimes, I will admit, but they are invaluable in terms of the information that you receive. Also, more likely than not, in that initial April meeting that is held by the, uh, central appraisal districts, you'll also receive preliminary numbers. That's your starting point. And so it's really important that that trained staff get those preliminary numbers and then get the updates as they come in along with the final roll. And I'll talk about that in just one second. Um, finance staff, city manager, mayor should receive the appraisal. Finance staff, city manager, mayor should receive the appraisal districts' monthly updates. Harris County is committed, I know they committed to you guys to provide, I believe, the certified estimates and the final certified role. During the course of my conversations with them, they committed to provide you monthly updates starting in April. So, that will be good, because especially for Harris County, if you do get a certified estimate in July, you'll be able to track those numbers as the months go by. And I will tell you from experience that, and you all know this, the budget process can be a very crazy, fast-paced process. And getting those numbers on a regular basis allows for staff to be able to review that, ask questions. If they're not happy with the answer, it also allows them to elevate to the city manager, to the council, the questions that are being asked to try to get answers. And so, I would recommend, if Fort Bend County or Brazoria County hasn't committed to that already, I would recommend that, that staff begin receiving those. Again, the final certified role was not delivered to the city of, or to the city of Pearland. Best practices would be that you would typically receive, again, preliminary rolls, any updates, and then the final certified. If the, if the certified role that comes out in July includes certified estimates, then I would recommend that there be an agreement that you also receive the final certified numbers and compare those as quickly as the numbers are made available.
And I'll say on that one, we're probably guaranteed we'll get a certified estimate at the end of July from HCAD.
I, I'm pretty sure you will as well, because I understand the protests are even higher this year. Communicate, 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 communicate. It's critically important, and this is why I recommend you have dedicated staff to communicate with both the appraisal districts and the assessor. Because if along the way, you're not getting the information you need, then again, it gives you an opportunity to elevate that up to the appropriate level and to begin getting those, those, that information either explained or, or updated if the numbers are wrong. So communicate, compare, compare previous years to current year. Had you received the HCAD numbers from fiscal year twenty-two and compared those against fiscal twenty-three, you would have had the ability at that point to say, whoa, stop, let's ask questions, let's get some answers, because these numbers aren't jiving. When you have a zero in one year's value and a one-point-six billion-dollar value in the next year, that should raise those questions. And by comparing, and I personally would suggest you compare at least two years of data and start building trends as they go on AV growth and things like that. Because that's good information that you can provide, both during the budget process and to the citizens when they're asking about property values, et cetera. Again, comparing the tax assessor information to the final rule that come, that came out in August, you would have had an opportunity to, as I call it, kind of put the brakes on things and reassess. You did not have that opportunity, because no one knew. So that's, that's, goes back to that communication. And then finally, have an established, dedicated contact, both with the CADs, or contact or two, both with the CADs and with the Tax Assessor's Office. Because that gives you a point of contact, you're not getting moved around from an analyst to an analyst, et cetera. You gotta have a dedicated person that you can go to, to get the answers that you need, and get them as quickly as you possibly can. Because again, time is of the essence during this whole process, especially after July twenty-sixth. I'll stop there and ask if you have any questions.
The only questions I've got, and we'll turn it over, Trent, and I see Amy in the back. On these recommendations, what are we doing to address these? Because, I mean, we've had these recommendations for a little bit of time. What are we doing to address those internally?
Sure, so I'll, I'll kick things off and then hand it off to Amy. One of the things we initially identified was whether the Tax Assessor Collector for Brazoria County was going to continue doing our worksheet or not. We wanted to have someone else with expertise in that, be able to also run a parallel or in the absence of the Tax Assessor Collector doing our worksheet, doing our worksheet for us. We have already contracted with Assessments of the Southwest. We identified that early on in the process, that we needed to do that even before these recommendations. So we do have Assessments of the Southwest under contract. The recommendation of at least a couple of people trained, we're shooting for four, a minimum of three, but we're planning on four. That way, we've not only have multiple people who can check what we're doing, check what Assessments of the Southwest is doing, but also have people versed in the, the different worksheets and the, and the information provided from the different appraisal districts, be able to attend those appraisal district meetings. Because just recently, the April meetings this year, they were on, I believe, the Brazoria County as well as the Harris County were on the same day. So we've got to have multiple people ready to attend those different meetings when there are conflicts like that. So that, that's where we are. And then maybe if we can bounce back to the recommendations real quick.
Sure.
One more. And then, we have made the contacts and made sure we are on distribution lists for the, for the different appraisal districts. So, Amy, are there other things we want to add in as far as what we've done thus far and what we're planning on?
I will say that we've sent a couple of staff representatives already down to Ms. Bulanek's office to learn how to do the tax worksheet. So we do have those notes and that, those instructions that we created ourselves when we went down to shadow her. And then we will try to attend the trainings that Rodney's recommended that we attend. I do want to point out that those are industry-specific trainings for the tax folks. They're not used to, cities did a lot more before Senate Bill Two, when the worksheet was simpler. It was three pages long instead of the eight-page-long one. So, it's not as common anymore to have the city folks doing those types of things. We are going to get trained up on those, we're going to try to attend some of their courses, even though we don't obtain the same certifications that the tax assessors obtain. And I can tell you that the meeting notices and things like that, they come out very late. A lot of times, we don't receive them with even twenty-four hours' notice to be able to go. So I'm going to have my executive assistant monitor their websites like we would for a city website or something, because they're all subject to open records and open meetings and all that as well. So I'll have her put those on our calendars and make us aware of those meetings coming up. At least we'll have seventy-two hours of notice, rather than the way we get them now. I know the mayor has been sending us some notifications periodically, and it's usually, he gets them maybe the day before the meeting is to take place.
I know sometimes they'll have meetings at the CAD, and the day I get it, it's that day or the, it was actually the previous day.
Yes, sir.
By the time snow mail gets to you. And, and so, we, we've got to get these CADs and others up, and they truly, they can email that stuff out as opposed to, you know, sending it, you know, regular mail. And, and maybe there's a legal requirement they have to send it that way versus email. But, but I think monitoring those types of things is, is certainly warranted. Do they have a standing meeting on a monthly basis? That, that's the third Thursday or the third Tuesday of the month, or something like that?
I'm not sure if they do, that's what, we'll get those put on our calendars, we'll get, we'll understand what their schedules are. And then also, I have been in touch with Assessments of the Southwest repeatedly. We do have a signed contract with them, they've been helping us. Kendra and I have been in touch with them, trying to get copies of their worksheets and things like that that they use, so we can run scenarios for council during budget season and things like that. Often, what you ask of us to produce is stuff that we've worked in the past with, with Ms. Bulanek's office to produce. So they're going to help us with those. And then also, they've agreed to come if council, you know, wishes to ask questions or have a presentation about what services they offer, they've also made that offer as well.
And Amy, we've also got access to the, the portals or the raw data for the three different CADs for Assessments of the Southwest as well as ourselves, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They're pulling that information automatically for us as it comes out. And it's coming out probably semi-monthly now with updates and, and supplementals and things like that. So they're getting all that information. I will say that, that April deadline, when the preliminary values come out for Fort Bend and Brazoria, Harris County's preliminary deadline is May fifteenth, it's later. So that data is still being uploaded into Assessments of the Southwest systems. So that's why we don't have any preliminary numbers for you all tonight.
And then, real quick, go to slide twelve on, next slide.
I'm sorry, I was going the wrong way.
There we go, the compare the current year, one of the things that we had discussed in the audit committee was keeping not just a two-year, a three-year, but keeping a five-year rolling chart.
Right.
So we can look at trends, and, and certainly, if something, you know, truly pokes through the ceiling, we know, or the floor, we know that there's a problem. So I don't know where we are with that, this is, and I would compare the three, not just the total, but the three counties.
Correct, and I, I believe, Mayor, we, you know, we have tracked that for many years, and we have that data. We haven't always broken it down by the three different counties. I think we, we have looked at it by the three different counties, but I think separating them out and looking at each of them individually to see what that, that rate of increase or that percent increase is, would help us identify any issues.
And, and I would also add to that, as granular as you can get on those historical tracking, and when I mean that, I, I mean both existing value, new value, homestead values, you know, your over-sixty-fives, et cetera, et cetera. Tracking it in that way starts to build you some very clear pictures of trends that are occurring in the community. And so, it's very useful information, not only for looking back, but also for looking forward as you're doing five-year financial projections and things of that nature. Because it's, it's real easy to just make an assumption of X percent growth overall. But when you start digging into the, the detail, and you start seeing that level of detail, you can start seeing where your gains and losses might be in values. And so that's really important to, to begin, to get to that granular level of detail as you're, as you're doing those comparisons.
Alright, questions, counsel?
So Southwest is the consultant we're hiring to help us with our tax data, is that correct?
Assessments of the Southwest, yes, sir.
Okay, so, do we have a cost on that?
Yes, sir, it's a, a little under four thousand dollars.
Month?
No, annually.
Annually?
Yes, sir.
That's based on the, you know, the scope we've get provided to them at this point, which is to, you know, help us anal- analyze these numbers as they come in and do the worksheet itself. As we get further into this, we may ask them, we may expand that scope some. And just to give a little background, Assessments of the Southwest, they have been doing the appraisal information, or helping with some of the appraisal or assessed value projections with our ters and the, the the management district as well, for, for many years.
So I, I guess.
So they're experienced in it.
Sorry, so the question I have, this error could have been made by them also, obviously, right? They could, I mean, if, if the, I guess appraisal district is coming back three times and telling you they've verified and it's correct, they could also make that error, is that possible?
It would, it could be possible. Again, if you do not have the individual appraisal district numbers going back a couple of years at least, that you have some comparisons with, you're getting your numbers in total. You don't see the breakdown by, by county, okay? And so because of that, it's very difficult to see where those anomalies might be occurring. You can kind of, you can look at it and you can say something just doesn't look right, but it's very difficult to see it. Now, Assessments of the Southwest will be receiving the county-by-county appraisals as they come in. And I believe that that will give you the opportunity, and your staff, the opportunity to better identify those kinds of anomalies.
So, so I guess.
Can I add something real quick to that? So I think another, while it could happen, I think because of Assessment of the Southwest, their experience with Harris County Appraisal District, that they would have, they would have had the understanding of what Harris County Appraisal District was providing when the two different numbers were plugged into our worksheet. And we would have just got one of those numbers plugged in there. Because they have exper- extensive experience working with Harris County Appraisal District.
And they attend the meetings.
Sure, and so I guess my last question is, in case we have this error in the future and we're using them, is there an insurance policy where you can file a claim on?
That may be a Darren question, I'm sorry. So if Assessment of Southwest make a similar mistake, would they have any type of insurance that would cover that mistake?
Well, they're going to have errors and omissions insurance, and to what extent that would cover the damages to the city, that's a whole nother issue, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they would have governmental immunity the way, the way Brazoria County.
No, they would not have the same defenses that Brazoria County Tax Office does.
Right. And I am glad to know that, that we're talking about a small, you know, four thousand dollar number to get this done. I mean, Tax Assessor Collector's Office does not charge us to do this, it's part of that inter-local agreement to do it. But given this report and, and others, I don't see them taking that back on anytime soon. And that's okay, I mean, sometimes we need to move on to other things and do what's, what we need to do, it's in the best interest of our city anyway. Remember Cam Carr, you were reaching for your mic just a second ago, you good? Okay, any other questions, comments on this?
The underlying supporting data that went into this report, is that available now for us to review? I know it's been bottled up in the audit committee, is that now available for every member to review?
So the, the underlying data beyond what's in the report?
This is a presentation, I'm assuming there's an underlying more comprehensive report.
The report was attached to our item tonight as well.
That, that's.
The full report, yes, sir.
That has all the data and the interactions with the counties and the different discussions.
Right.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll state from the audit committee, you haven't, we haven't seen anything that you haven't.
I'll also add that the, that the email communication that you referred to earlier, that was in your presentation, was not in the report, but I did review that communication as a part of the, the work effort to put this report together.
And then are we publicly posting this item? And that, that portal that has all the budget issues, I'm assuming this report's going to get uploaded?
Yes, we can upload this to the.
Should be uploaded to the
Yes.
Tax calculation worksheet page.
Website, okay.
Just for the public's knowledge as well, we sent the, the written report along with a slide presentation, everything from SGR to Commissioner's Court. Last week, we sent it to Tax Assessor Collector as well as HCAD. So they had a professional, professional courtesy, we presented all of this to them on Thursday as this was coming out in the, in the packet on Thursday evening.
Mayor, if I could just conclude, we'll take the recommendations from this, as, as long as council has no objections to any of the recommendations. And we'll, the ones we haven't already started to implement, we'll start working towards those, and we'll report back out to the council where we are on those in the future, future months.
I want to wrap up with, I'm sorry, did somebody have another question?
Thank you, Mayor, Trent, Amy, in this presentation and the next audit that we have here a couple items later, both of them identified a moral problem, a morale problem that we have within the finance department. How are we addressing that, and what are we going to get that corrected? Because I know unhappy people aren't going to perform as well as happy people.
Sure, so, yeah, as, as everyone, I think, on the council is well aware, we've had some turnover in, in the finance department. We're, we've really, at this point, got a lot of lot of those, those holes filled, some of them very newly, and some of them have been here for a little bit. So I think it's, you know, continuing to make sure those people are supported, have what they need to, to do their jobs successfully, as well as, you know, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, but you know, it's, it's providing what they need, providing Amy and her team what they need. So we make sure that, Amy, anything to add to that?
No, I don't think so. We have a new crew, mostly new crew, probably a third of them are new in the last eight months. So we're trying to just build camaraderie, build teamwork, have more interaction. We've restructured where everybody is located in the office and things like that. So we're trying to make it more effective and efficient, also focusing on building relationships cross, interdepartmentally with the other departments to help as well, to help them feel connected and not so siloed and separated from the rest of the organization.
And we're gaining my train of thought. We, as part of the 65th North Group, the, the work they're doing for us right now on vulnerability assessment, a piece of that is looking at the Finance Department, the staffing levels, as well as kind of the organizational study that is mentioned as, as part of the recommendations here. So we've, we've got that in the works. If, if we see any gaps in what their scope is versus what the recommendation is here for the organizational study, we can, we can amend that scope with 65th North Group so that we have that information as we move forward.
Yeah, I think that's important because during the course of the interviews, it became very apparent that the finance staff had some concerns with regard to workload and staff capacity to address that workload. And they didn't, you know, they felt like that they weren't adequately appreciated, we'll call it, for the work that they do. And there was a recurring theme of a lack of trust between the Finance Department and other departments in the city. And it could have permeated up to the city manager and possibly the council, I don't know. But there, there was that recurring theme that came up. And so as a result, what I've recommended to your city manager is that an organizational study be conducted, a deep dive interview process be conducted with both staff, department heads, city management, possibly council if need be, and comparative staffing alignment with the, with the current finance staff structure compared to like-sized cities. Potential for staff augmentation where needed. As I mentioned earlier, you know, the dedication of staff, the review time of staff, attendance of the meetings of staff, the training of staff as it relates to the tax rate calculation, it all takes away from their ability to do their work. And that work right now is perceived to be, in my opinion, the capacity issues are not there to address the current workload. And so may or may not include those recommendations, I don't know. And possible realignment of, of the department structure itself. So I would recommend that an organizational study be done and, and then that report be shared with, with city manager and with the council as well.
I appreciate that. Because on our, on our audit or our financial statement, Orbis came up with a similar comment. And that's what kind of concerned me to, to try and work through that to where we get that out of the system and, and have people that are happy to do the job, get the job done to the best of their ability.
Yeah, I mean, I can share you a personal experience that I walked into many years ago where, where I had a department that was in similar shape. And I did the org study or had the org study done, came back and completely realigned the department. And they were, it, it worked wonders, I can tell you. So I would highly recommend it.
All right. Thank you.
And with that, I'm, I'm done. I appreciate your time. And if there's any other questions of me, I'm happy to answer them.
Any follow-up, last questions from anyone?
I'd just like to say thank you. I know we, the Audit Committee put a lot of work in making sure we got the right firm selected. And just the way you communicated the facts tonight, the timeline, I certainly appreciate it. I appreciate the, the direct answers. And I guess for staff, maybe in one of the, the first budget meetings, if we can kind of just get a quick update to where we are and all the recommendations, just so this doesn't sit on the shelf and we can close, close all the gaps on how we're moving forward.
What's 65th Group's timeline on some of what they're doing?
Amy, do you have that?
They are coming back at the end of this month and the beginning of June to do some more field work. And then I'm hoping to have something from them within about 45 days after that.
So that's also in, in that structure of it, that's the timeliness that you're talking about as well. If we do, or, Trent, are you looking at a deeper dive in organizational structure more than what 65th Group is looking at?
So I want to kind of understand their scope, make sure I fully understand that, see if there's any gaps in that from what the recommendation for an organizational study is. We could expand that as well as, you know, I'm going to be doing my own looking and, and assessment as well.
I know we're going to talk through some of that towards the end of July. So again, I think we'll have a lot of time to, to discuss some of this and certainly not one to sit on the shelf. Both Rodney and Wendell, thank you so much for the, the time and effort. You know, for the public's sake, one of the reasons it took a little bit longer to get this piece done is, was finding, finding consultants that didn't have ties to Harris County, Brazoria County, or to us. So truly independent, they hadn't worked for us. None of these had worked for the county, none of them had worked for Harris County. And so having that true unbiased approach was very, very important to this group and our body, as well as to, to get the answers that we needed. So I want to thank you for the time and effort going through this and your candidness tonight. So it helps. It helps us. One of the questions as we were, even in Austin, that I got asked as we were advocating on a bill was, what are we doing? What are we, the City of Pearland, doing to make sure that it doesn't happen again? And I referenced, we're going through this process, number one, so we have fresh eyes on what happened, but number two, so we get good feedback on best practices moving forward so we don't, you know, reoccur. And, and they were, they were very glad to hear, you know, that what we're doing in this process. So again, thank you so much for, for the time and effort.
Sir, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. With that, we'll move to new business item number four. Mr. Hernandez, would you present that, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2023-121. So moved.
Second. Motion of second staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this resolution is for renewing our, our wind and hail insurance for city facilities. So our risk management team has gone through a process to update our total insured values by conducting, working with a firm to conduct an appraisal of all of our facilities. We then work with McGriff Insurance Service because they are our broker on, on these, these types of insurance. And they solicited competitive quotes for our insurance through the market. And so this policy is coverage for a total insured value of approximately $194 million with a per occurrence limit of $50 million. And that comes with a 3% deductible with a minimum of $100,000 on that deductible. So our recommendation is approval with McGriff Insurance Services for the next year's wind and hail insurance in the amount of $1,575,697.
All right. With that, we'll turn it to council. Questions, comments? Member Berry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd originally kind of submitted some preliminary questions that have been answered, but I just kind of wanted some clarifying. I want to thank y'all for answering those prior to the meeting. I wanted to ask a little bit about the, the actual insured value. We went from 266 million to 194 million. So I understand that there have been some adjustments associated with our schedule. And can you describe what some of those were?
Maybe I'll kind of kick things off and hand it off. So one, one of the things we looked at not only was having everything appraised, so we did have current accurate value dollars. We also looked at some of the things that, that had previously been insured under the policy and looked at whether or not, you know, the, the value of those things, it really made sense to, to have them under the policy based on the value of that asset versus the increased cost we saw on the, on the premiums, as well as what we really thought the risk were on some of those things, based on the way they're built and, and the wind, wind rating that they, they're engineered to. Some of those things are like, had to do with our water and wastewater infrastructure, the plants, the tanks, things like that, as well as a lot of our, our, our traffic signals and things like that. It did, it didn't, you know, and working with McGriff and working through the process, it didn't make sense to, to have everything insured under this particular policy for wind and hail. And so that's where a lot of the reduction in the total insured value came from. Anything to add to that?
Also, good evening, everyone. With that, we had to have our buildings assessed. So some of the buildings were overvalued. And so we went through the process, we identified a few buildings that were overvalued. So it impacted and reduced some of the rates that we had as well.
I think some of those overvaluations were, they had taken a look at what did it take to build that facility initially? And, you know, when you're looking at this, you're not necessarily rebuilding your parking lots or your slab or your underground infrastructure or anything like that. So they, this, this really looked at just, you know, what it would take to, to go back up with a facility if it was.
Rebuild the structure.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we had a 60% increase in rate. So there must have been a significant amount of, of changes to our insured values, right? I do appreciate the fact we threw business interrupts in there. I don't know what kind of BI we're going to, we're going to have. I mean, unless we just don't have a park or any parks whatsoever. But I mean, I don't really see the value in that necessarily. I don't want to wrap my head around these deductibles. And I know that today and that today's marketplace, we don't really have a whole lot of control over that. We're at the mercy of the marketplace when they determine what deductibles are. And I think in the previous presentation, you had various different deductible structures and things of that sort. But, you know, for, for a building, this building, let's just say this building is a three and a half million dollar building, you know, on a singular location, we're looking at a million dollar plus deductible. So I just kind of want everybody to wrap their head around that a little bit so you can kind of, you know, be able to for the flavor on a particular item. So I think it's very important that we understand that, not that we have a whole lot of control of it, over it. Then we paid Kroll $48,000 to do an assessment, appraisal?
Yes, we paid $48,000 for Kroll to do an assessment to ensure that our billion buildings have been evaluated and that it's current. When it came down to our building evaluations, we were solely relying on the numbers from TML directly without having a direct correlation as to our new buildings that were evaluated, they weren't coming out on a regular basis to evaluate our buildings. So with that, we paid $48,000 to ensure we had the most accurate value for our assessment, to ensure we're getting the best value for our insurance.
Yeah. So we're paying more for our buildings and we paid more to find out that we were paying more.
Well, I think, I think, I think the appraisal, you know, is what allowed us to help get the total insured value down from the 268 to the 194. And with just the increase across the board for this type of insurance, that's what's impacting the actual premium. So I think if we, if we had held at the 260 something we had previously, this number would have been closer to 1.9. So I think going through that appraisal was able to help us get this down from that 1.9. If we'd held it at 265, down to this 1.57.
So moving forward in future years, we're not planning to do appraisals every year, are we?
No, we wouldn't recommend doing.
There's other ways to do that don't cost anything. I'm just letting you know that. So does McGriff not have access to those items, those tools? MSB, Marshall Swift and back, they're very simple. I think y'all do. You have 100,000 people in Houston. So feel free to.
Yes, Mayor, Council. We do have access to those and we did run Marshall Swift backs on all the properties when we first took over, understanding that Kroll was already running reconstruction values on all of your locations as well. Just wanted to clear one, one thing. On this specific building, you have it valued at about 8.1. And so that 3% deductible will be 244,000 on this location.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was, I was just picking a number out of the, out of the air, right?
Okay.
3% of whatever the 8-point whatever is. So I get that. Yeah. Okay. So we already had Kroll doing an appraisal. So therefore that trumped the fact that y'all shouldn't have just done the MSB or just foregone the conclusion that we didn't really need to do the MSB because that was already being done?
We had already run MSPs on them. And we did do comparison to Kroll's numbers and they were very close.
Similar.
Yes.
All right.
Just for the record, go ahead and tie your name and address for the.
Yes, it's Johnny Fontenot with McGriff and our address is 10100 Katy Freeway, Suite 400, Houston 77043.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So this policy, they don't have co-insurance, correct?
No, no co-insurance requirements.
Okay. And then I know a city down south, when I was talking to a city manager, once told me they actually insure a lot of their buildings through TWIA. Was that not an option here? Or is that, was, did I mishear him telling me that?
It used to be an option. It's not an option anymore.
Okay. And the last question I have, I guess this is more to Trent. If there is a natural disaster and FEMA declares a state of emergency, would they not cover some of these costs to get the city back up and running?
So once FEMA pays you for a location, there's a maintain, obtain and maintain requirement under their, under their FEMA law. And so if FEMA ever paid you like 10 years ago during IIC for this building, then they require you to obtain and maintain the insurance on it and they won't pay you again. So that's a problem we have with the Gulf Coast. So we have so many clients that are on the Gulf Coast, specifically public entities. And then you have a claim and then FEMA pays you and then you have another claim, they don't want to pay you anymore.
If you don't have insurance.
Correct.
So, you know, we carry that insurance and then if there, if there is a declared disaster and whatever the insurance doesn't pay, then there is an opportunity. Correct, Jill?
Correct.
And this building did get.
Yeah. And this building was damaged during IIC and was restored through FEMA funds. So we.
So just to be clarified, it would be specific to the element that was damaged and covered by FEMA and/or insurance. So if there's a characteristic of damage that did not come into play with FEMA public assistance and an O and M requirement for insurance would not have been issued, it's just for the damage mentions and descriptions that were associated with that particular FEMA coverage.
So you're saying if the roof was blown and they pay you for the roof, you'd have to cover the roof?
Correct. Because they're going to make, you're going to have to make sure that that component of insurance is.
So, and this is just for my education purpose. I apologize. I know it's late. So if we build a new building, wouldn't it be cheaper not to insure it or insure it at a very low value because the FEMA is going to pick up the tab on it?
It's not a bad strategy.
I would, I would disagree, Councilmember, and only because it's getting so much more difficult for us to get that declared level of damage statewide to qualify for FEMA public assistance, that it would have to be a major catastrophic event. We could experience damage for a lesser event and FEMA not declare and we would be stuck with.
Yeah. The one thing I would agree with him, City of Houston's a prime example. City Houston's been paid so many times by FEMA now, they have a really tough time collecting anything from FEMA. Jefferson County and Beaumont, Texas is another one of our clients that run into that same problem. They, they had like four. They they had like four named windstorms in like six years, and the last one FEMA basically was denying everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Even the tornado we had here back in March took out the animal shelter in Pasadena. President would not declare that. It didn't rise to the level of of total total damage that that needed. So again, you know, if Pasadena didn't have insurance on the animal shelter, you know, obviously, I guess they just bulldoze it and move on. I don't know. Or they have to come out of pocket to rebuild it. So that's where the rules of on the federal side get more and more sticky each and every day, each and every storm that comes through. I know they throw a lot of money at these storms, but it doesn't always make it to these types of these types of events, so and these types of places, so. Any other questions, comments? Cam Carr?
Really briefly. What is our budget impact? It sounds like this is a bigger number. Are we within our budget? I mean, it's not an insignificant chunk of money, but it's not a gigantic amount compared to.
So it's it's more than we budgeted for this year, but we're going to take it out of the risk fund balance, which we'll replenish as we move forward. We do have enough to cover it in the risk fund, the the fund balance there.
How big is the the delta, do you know?
Uh, we budgeted a million 58,900.
500,000. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Just wondering, still, I'm still hung up on this hiring Kroll versus doing the MSB. Why would we do that?
So if you notice, we have a new consultant. We no longer are dealing with Mr. Blazi anymore. And so in that situation, we made a decision to pivot and change consultants because obviously we weren't getting the service that we thought we deserved. And so finding out tonight that we could have had it done by them directly was a surprise to me, just as a surprise to you. And this is unfortunate, but lesson learned in this situation.
So we asked that question, and when we were told they didn't, we moved forward with Kroll, first we're hearing this.
Thank you. Just for the record, anything below 50K has to come to council?
Right.
Just ironic that they came in right at 48.
Thank you, guys, for staying so late. Appreciate it.
Yep. Very much appreciated. Any last call for questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel. Mayor Patel Mcosa.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Moving forward to item number five. Ms. Cade, would you present that, please?
Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2023-120, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our mechanical services contract renewal with STP, which is used to maintain many things within our water and wastewater sewer facilities and lift stations. This is the third and final renewal for this contract. What they do for us is a lot of metal fabrication, motor rewinding, pump repairs, just about anything we need that we can't do ourselves within our water and wastewater realm. So the recommendation for approval tonight is 618,780.
All right. That completes staff report. Open it up to questions, comments from council. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Patel Mcosa.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
With that, we'll move to item number six. Mr. Barry, would you present that, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2023-105, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the acceptance of the city's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 22. We had a presentation last week from our audit firm, Forvis, and that was when we still had draft documents. We were still awaiting the final version of all those documents. Those final documents were received last Tuesday, and there were no changes to the information or the numbers presented last week. So we put this back on the agenda tonight and recommend the acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal fiscal year 22.
All right. That completes staff report. We did see the the full presentation from the auditors a couple weeks ago. They were, I think, maybe somebody from Forvis may be here tonight, but I don't think it's our actual auditors. So on the actual audit itself, do we have any other questions, comments from council?
I just, I'll echo this again and again. I know I've said it to a bunch of people, but the change in the acronym was not communicated to council, and so I was like, what in the world is this? So I realized that it may mean something negative in a far off land, but, you know, South Africa is not the same as the United States, so if it is going to change, just communicate it early with these acronyms because we got so many of them up here at, you know.
Why don't we just start calling it the annual audit? Leave it at that.
We could do that, too. Yeah.
Instead of the the acronym numbers. I don't know that ACFER makes it sound all that prestigious either, right?
Yeah, because when y'all first said that ACFER, I was like, what in the world is an ACFER? That's a one I haven't heard yet.
Right. So. Any other? All other questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Patel Mcosa.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Back to item number seven. Mr. Patel, would you present that for consideration, please?
Yes, sir. Consider impossible action resolution number R 2023-111. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. You're there. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As with the last item, I'll stay away from all acronyms, and I'll say the words out. So as provided for in your packet, our auditor Forvis has requested additional funds for completing our annual comprehensive financial report or audit for fiscal year 22. The original contract amount was for 129,030. The ask from Forvis is an additional 87,970. As demonstrated in your background documents, that although the audit's been completed in fewer hours this year than it has over the last couple of hours, the the requested contract amount is actually more than they requested or we approved in the past two years. So, you know, we're here to answer any questions we can for you on this request.
All right. We'll open it up to questions, comments from council.
So I'm sorry, did you say there were less hours and they want more money?
I'm not going to fully explain it. You know, they're they're, you know, the rates are different year to year. But then the way they presented the their additional asks over the past couple of years and this year's is that they present the hours, and they write off a certain amount of those hours and then make their ask. And in the previous years, there was a larger amount written down.
Was there a contract with them?
Sure. Contract with them was for 129,030.
Any other questions, comments? It it is, it has been very complicated dealing with this firm the last two years and now this year. In each one of the years, there's been a contracted amount, and then there's an additional amount that they have come to seek. And if we were, I I I think the city manager is on to something when, you know, moving and looking at a different firm moving forward, that the contract's going to be written a lot differently. And in this particular case, you know, they they look at their contract, and I'm just going to go by what what how it's been presented to me. And you might have a a regular, I'll just say CPA, working on the account and the audit, regular audit, and then and that's contracted at a certain hourly rate, then all of a sudden a manager or a partner's involved, and that rate goes to 600 an hour. Well, in our case, the hours that they use were primarily partner rate, but yet, you know, contracted at a at a different rate. I I'm not happy with any of it. I know at some level, the city has even said at some level, there has been some additional hours, even though their hours have come down from year to year, there's been some additional asks and some additional hours that that they've had to spend to maybe get some of the questions asked and answered. But I'm as puzzled as you are, how they came in. Originally, their ask was much higher than this. Went to the tune of 120 or 130?
Yes, sir. I think it came down in the 25 to 30 range. There were some hourly rates, as you mentioned, that after the audit had started, bumped up about 75 an hour across the board. We questioned those, and they took those back to the rates that they started the contract out. I guess they had raises somewhere in there, so they pulled their rates back to what they were when they started this audit.
So it's been a moving target from day one. The 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 final number has been a moving target from day one. So, you know, this is this is what has been asked by by Forvis. I think what staff is asking, what does council want to do?
So have we always agreed to pay them for the last two years?
So we did agree to the last two years for an additional amount. They, when they presented the initial numbers to us, and as they did this time, they presented, here's the full cost based on their hourly rates, and then they presented those to us with a write down of a certain percentage, and that's what they asked for in the end. In the previous years, that was a much smaller percentage than they've asked for this year. So the number was smaller in the last two years that they asked for than this year.
And I'll say, and I'll say, one of the things that we're required to do now is a single audit. And so under Joel's leadership and Joel's part of the house, all of the different grant fundings and those types of things that we get, we have a single audit that goes into that. If I remember correctly, last year, I don't know that the single, I don't know, I can't remember if the single audit was a part of our initial contract, but then, you know, that was that was either added or it was an additional amount. And so there rightly should have been some additional amount for that for that single audit.
I'm not sure if that was part of it or not, but I know we've had to do a single audit for probably approaching a decade or more at this point, so it should always be in there.
There were some problems either, not with with Joel, but it was the way the accounting was coming up to them on and from Tech Dot and some of these other things. So it's additional kind of hours from what they originally anticipated. But even then, and and remember, Carbone can maybe remember from some of the audit, you know, stuff, but they they came back with a number of, I forget the additional amount last year was something like 25,000 or 30,000, something like that, some number way less than than what we're talking about here. And it was truly looked at in the form of of additional work that had to be done. And again, this one, I I just question, just like thirds, three times the charm. They they put something out there, and then here comes the third year. And and here they're supposed to be auditing us for, you know, particular measures, and they're adding 75 an hour above the contract and those types of things. It just sets a bad taste in your mouth.
Mayor, can I ask you something? Is, when, this may have already been asked and answered, and I apologize if so. When 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 does our contract with them end?
We're in our third year, third and final year. This is it.
Have we sought out another?
We we plan to go out for a request for proposals this year to to select a firm for next year's audit. And and these these have been, you know, when we go through that process, we'll select somebody with the intent to use them for multiple years. The way the contract's written, we, you know, if we're not happy with the service, we can we can stop at the end of that that first go around and and go back out for a request for proposals. But for various reasons, we continued over the last couple of years, but this year, we're going to go out for an RFP.
Thank you.
Member Barry?
Yes, sir, Mayor. You know, and last time Amanda was here, you know, she prevented him on behalf of Forvis. And the reason, the primary reason for the increased fee and the changes and the the time, the additional time it took, was because of staff turnover. And so if we had such, if they had such a hard time working with staff, how did we have less hours?
Right.
You know, and so, you know, I would like to, you know, tell Amy and those guys, yeah, I apologize for that, but, you know, I didn't, I didn't catch this earlier. But, you know, you shouldn't necessarily fall on the sword for something like this because it's the the numbers are the numbers. You know, it took them less hours to perform the audit, and there's no way that they should make you guys out to be the scapegoat. So.
They performed less hours, they just charged a higher rate.
They just charged a higher rate.
Because they had the partner rate versus, you know, who should have been doing the work.
And the senior associate, too.
We're paying because they had their their staff spread in other places. They even said.
Think it was their issue, not ours.
Correct.
Yeah. That's it.
Mayor, since there's a representative here, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Councilmember. My name is Justin Roberts, 5151 Hidalgo, Houston, Texas, 77056. Way we can have fewer hours and still end up at a higher fee is because more expensive personnel have more experience, they're quicker at getting through things, and that's a it's a fairly universal attribute in a professional services firm. The more experienced you have, the quicker you can move, and but also the higher the the hourly rate that goes along with that. We did have conversations with the city about what they wanted from from the audit, from a timing perspective, and what was able to be done and what was agreed to early on. There were changes to that, and part of the the way we met the timeline that they had requested was to increase the amount of partner time that was in the job. And so that that's how you get to where we are there. I apologize, I'm not I'm not Amanda Eves. She is away at a training, and she asked me to to step in and and answer any questions that I was able to.
So I think I would also share, we were flexible on our end with some of the timing as well when they asked us to delay certain things. So there was some mutual give and take there and mutual agreement on how to move forward.
Right.
And then I I was not aware, I don't know if our finance staff was, that the trade off there was we were going to have a a partner at a significantly higher rate doing doing that work.
That was going to be my question was, when we when we did this, when were we notified that a partner was doing this work at 600 bucks an hour versus someone at 200? I don't think we knew until we had a bill.
I know those discussions happened in February. Not being a part of them, I don't know that I can tell you the exact date of that.
Sure. And I think I think we were provided the numbers, the raw number, the big overall numbers, like, hey, that they had requested, you know, the 245, I think, was the number originally, or 242. Now it's the 217. They request that, we saw that request, and and it was in just lump sum numbers, and we started asking, we want to see the details of what you spent your time on to date. And then, as they hadn't completed the work at that time, and the 242 was a projection of how much it would take to complete the work, we asked for what is the breakdown, hourly breakdown? Who's doing the work? What's their hourly rate? How many hours are they going to be on this? And how much time did they spend on it prior to that? We asked for all those at the time. We were looking at those lump sum numbers, and I don't think we got those numbers until around May 1st, when we last met with the Audit Committee. So we didn't have that until very late in the game.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor. So Darren, what then if we wanted to dispute or maybe ask for additional clarity or justification for the number, would our potential recourse be?
Well, it'll it'll end up being a dispute. I mean, if the council challenges the amount that's due and owing, very likely could be disputed and find ourselves, you know, in a legal proceeding if that were to go, if we were to go there. I just want to say that last year, when we dealt with the disputed amount, there was a provision in the contract then that if there was going to be an increase in the amount of time and or amount of dollars deviating from the original contract amount, they were supposed to provide us sufficient notice and have discussions with us upfront. But this time, they there's apparently an amendment to the contract because that's not included in the contract this time. It does give them the authority to. not included in the contract this time. It does give them the authority to, um, to use some, and, you know, partners, higher hour, hourly rate. Uh, that authority does exist in the contract.
So the, the third-year contract was different from the second-year contract, but maybe, did we overlook that change, or did we know that that was the case and?
That, I don't know. Um-
Well, I guess we would have had, you know, opportunity to, uh, review that as well, but, um, that's interesting. And, but you're, the gentleman from four of us, you're saying that there was discussion, but do you know that there was a point where communication was given about the changes, either in the, the time element or the, the rate element?
Uh, the notes I was given said that on March seventh, a contract addendum with a revised fee was provided to the city.
I believe that's accurate, but it included zero detail. It was a number.
That's what we-
And, and it may have, it may have had hours associated with it. It gave us no detail on what they had spent the hundred and thirty-nine, hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars up to that point. Um, and that's when we requested, um, the, basically the time sheets or the work to that point, and the estimated time and the personnel assigned and their hourly rates, or, um, everything moving forward from that point. We, I don't, we didn't, I don't know the day we received that, but it was right around the beginning of this month.
And in, in the past, uh, what has been communicated, was it similar in nature to that type of communication, or was it different? More detailed, I guess, is what I'm asking.
You talking about in previous years?
Yes, in previous years.
I wasn't involved in the details of the previous years, but I don't recall ever seeing any more specific details. I think it was presented to us very much like it was this year and we, but they were, they were, uh, also, uh, writing off a much larger amount, so the increase was much smaller. So I don't think we got into the, you know, the questions over the details. I looked at it from a standpoint, if we're really going over this much, I want to know where they spent their hours up to that point and where they're proposing to spend their hours beyond that point.
Yeah, because I'd like to say, I mean, if there was a change in the, in the agreement, I would also like to see if there was a change in the way that it was communicated. Um, because obviously I think it was probably that, uh, section was omitted, I guess for a reason. I don't know, you know, I'm assuming to make it easier to, to move forward with making changes to your hours or your rates, things like that. But I, I think it should not have changed the format by which you're communicating any amendments or-
Yeah, and, and I, and I'll say, you know, I think it was in the March timeframe, even in the audit committee, that was presented to us, and our response back to staff was, get us detail. Just because somebody has given us a lump sum number and here it is, doesn't mean anything. How, how, where and what, right? And, uh, and again, it, it, we struggled to get that.
Mayor, can I, uh, make a recommendation that we table this? Get, yeah, sorry. Postpone it and get more information because if we're gonna vote today, I'm gonna say no.
I mean, we can, was that coming in the form of a, a motion to postpone?
Yes, sir.
I would just ask, we understand what that additional information is.
Let's get a motion.
I would, I would like to get the memo that they said they sent, uh, the amendment to the contract, and, uh, Darren, you can give an opinion after you look at it.
Sure.
But can we also get details of the hours?
That's what he's asking.
And everything, okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, Trent, do you have sufficient details of additional information you would-
We'll, we'll provide all the information that was provided us and the, and the timeframe of when we got the, that information.
And by way of a postponement, Darren, does this automatically come back to the next agenda item or next agenda, excuse me, next meeting?
Generally it would unless the council designates that it be at a, at a different meeting.
Yeah, you should have a designated timeline with the motion, I believe.
Yeah, but I think our next meeting is June-
June twelfth?
Twelfth. So is that sufficient time to get that information? Should have it, that's what I'm saying. So I think, I don't know that we change anything by, by going later. I think we'd have it.
By default, it would be June twelfth unless specified otherwise in the motion.
I think we'll, I think we'll be fine by twelfth. We should have the emails, we should have those types of information. If there's more clarification, certainly, uh, four of us should have a, um, an incentive to get the information to us. Uh, we, we will. Yep. All right. Did you have a?
I, I guess the comment is it's a sixty-eight percent increase, and that, that's just tough to stomach.
Yep.
Um, I, I think there, there is some additional costs there that was incurred and earned, but, uh, seven, sixty-eight percent increase, um, I haven't seen justification for that.
All right. With that, we're gonna vote on a postponement. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Mayor Potemkosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Uh, Mr. Carbone, would you place number eight on the table real quick?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R twenty-two-three dash one thirty-one, so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'd like to give the floor real quick to Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as I work for Keep Pearland Beautiful, I will be recusing myself and stepping out for this. Thank you.
Thank you for that. With that, we'll turn to a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Pearland and Keep Pearland Beautiful, and it's regarding participation in the Houston Galveston Area Council's Solid Waste Grant Program. So the MOU just, or memorandum of un, understanding basically just lays out, um, the city and KPB's responsibilities, the terms and the conditions for implementing, um, any HEAC solid waste grants. Um, so it's, uh, basically what we've done without, uh, having it, um, formally documented in a memorandum of understanding of who's doing what when we receive these grants and the manner that they're done. Um, so this just formalizes that. So staff recommends approval.
All right. Uh, questions, comments from council? Member Carbone?
I guess, I mean, we've talked about ethics and dealings and all that, and not inferring that anything's going on, but I get the question more often than not is, um, how, how do we have a sitting councilman as executive of KPB? So I give this opportunity for Darren to explain the ethical or non-ethical issue we're dealing with, but-
Yes, and I have to go back in time because I, if I recall correctly, uh, council, the council member took employment, uh, with KPB before he was elected as a council member. Or I'll have to go back and double check.
No, he was on council and took employment.
Was that- You'll just bear with me because I'm-
Sorry, I didn't give you a heads up, but I-
No, no, that's all right. Let me see. Find it right here. Bear with me.
Yeah, I mean, if it's more appropriate, I don't know if we table this or if there's something coming back soon where you can be prepared. I don't mean to catch you flat-footed in a, a, uh-
No, no, this is actually fine. I, I just wanted to make sure because I've, I've, this is going back to three, four, four years ago, and so if you'll just bear with me, um, so- If you don't mind, can we come back to it? Because I still have to look up one more document from where we opined on this back then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Say that again, we want to move forward and then-
Hey, I, I'd come back to this so I can answer that question.
Okay. So do we want to, it would be table? Yeah, so we'd actually table it and come back. So, yeah, motion to table keeps it in the same meeting, okay?
Yeah, the same meeting. We can come back to it at a different time.
I'll make a motion to table.
We have a motion to table and a second, uh, not debatable. All, uh, all those in favor of table and say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. We'll grab him and we'll do it again here in a minute. Okay. Uh, Mr. Kamkar, would you plus, uh, place number nine on the table, please?
Consideration Possible Action, First Reading of Ordinance Number One-three-five-eight-nine-four, so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Uh, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading of, uh, the ordinance to amend our non-development usage and fees. Um, specifically what we're doing here, if you crawl, recall when we had our discussion on the impact fees and the, and the new impact fees, and we were moving that to a, um, meter-based impact fee. Um, we had the question over, um, single-family residents that require a larger than a normal five-eighths inch meter for residents, uh, to provide them with the, uh, water pressure based on their distance from the water main. And so, um, both for, um, we wanted to make a change to allow, um, those particular single-family residents to pay the actual rates for a five-eighths inch meter versus what's actually needed for the water pressure. And we wanted to do that not only with the impact fees, but with their actual base charges for water and sewer. So what we're changing here is updating the language to apply the standard five-eighths inch meter-based charge for water and sewer, uh, on people's utility bills for residences that require a larger meter only to maintain the water pressure due to the distance from the water main. So there'll be some calculations and some analysis and review by our engineering department to ensure that's the purpose for the, the larger, uh, water meter in these instances. And so, um, this puts them basically on the same footing with other residences that have the same impact on our water and sewer system. Um, so we recommend approval, uh, approval of these changes.
That's a good thing. You're not penalized just because you're six hundred feet off the road. Uh, yeah, you might have some pressure to getting there, but you're not penalized rate-wise.
This, this will happen automatically for these residents?
So there, there will be a process where the engineering, uh, team reviews that. They'll, they'll have to request that, um, because ba, because you can have, you know, larger, uh, residents or residents that are, are larger residents plus irrigation systems where that's the driver and why they need a bigger meter. If they need a bigger meter based on how much water they're gonna use, then they need to pay the higher base rate charge. But if the only reason that they need the larger meter is because of the, um, the, the, the pressure drop because of the friction loss on the long, long line instead of a standard line, um, then, then they will be, uh, paying just the normal five-eighths inch meter, uh, for water and sewer base charges.
Very good. Thank you.
And, and we're not talking about, I mean, it's citywide, but we're not talking about a ton of properties across the city.
We're talking about a handful of properties.
Yeah. It's, it's a small number at the end of the day. We'll probably, we'll have a few more come online that are, you know, flag lot type stuff that'll be out there. So there'll be some fairness as we move forward.
So appreciate Raj and his team taking a look at this and how do we make, how do we make it fair?
So this is first of two readings?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemkosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, are we good to go back to number nine? Mr. Coz, Mr. Coker?
Uh, yes, I, I was able to identify that information if you would-
Why don't you step out, uh, formally remove from the table, just need a motion?
So do I just make a motion to, uh, uh, consideration and, uh, possible action resolution number R two-zero-two-three dash one-three-one, so move?
Second. Remove from the table. We have a second to remove from the table. Now back into the discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor Councilmember. I appreciate your patience. I was able to, to go back and, uh, pull up the information from that timeline. And just as, um, wait by way of background, it was October the twelfth of two thousand and fifteen, the city council, uh, entered into an agreement with KPB, uh, to operate the Stella Robert's Recycle Center. Uh, that contract was ultimately renewed in two thousand and seventeen, and, uh, and then at that time it was set to expire in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, and obviously, um, subsequent to that, Councilmember Hernandez was elected to the city council in May of two thousand and eighteen. And then he was offered employment by KPB in April of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, before accepting employment, uh, he did reach out to find out if, if there was a conflict under state law that would prohibit him from working for KPB. And, uh, that, that was researched, the information provided to him, and ultimately provided the council as well. But, uh, the answer to that question is, uh, there is a conflict under state law, but the way the state law conflict is handled is that a member, uh, if you receive more than ten percent of your gross income, you have a conflict, okay? But that conflict is permissible as long as you file the proper conflicts affidavit, and then you abstain from any participation in any matter involving that, uh, your, your employer and business between your employer and the city council. And so, uh, Councilmember Hernandez accepted that employment. He filed a count, uh, conflicts affidavit at that time, uh, that's been on file with the city, and I think he actually filed another one this eve, uh, as well for this, this evening, did he not? Okay. Uh, but, uh, he has one that's on file for any action actually that the council would be taking, uh, to let the public, and I believe it's on his conflicts page, uh, public disclosure page as required by the city's ethics ordinance. And so what that does is it lets the public know that he does, um, essentially make ten percent or more of his gross income from KPB, and so he has a substantial interest in KPB, and as a result, uh, cannot participate in any matter. And so the affidavit's on file, and, uh, he's abstained, so he's in compliance.
All right. Thank, thank you for outlining that, and-
Sure.
I guess to add some of the disclosure, I, I think we see emails come through whenever he is meeting with staff. Um, so by me asking the question, I'm not trying to imply that anything's going on, just, I've been asked that so many times, I, I figured we'd get it out, uh, get it answered in a public meeting. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Um, when we, uh, updated our ethics ordinance here, uh, back, uh, late last year, was, is there another, uh, does, does this ordinance, or excuse me, yeah, does this, uh, action require, what, would we, they, they have to, they have to abstain, recuse, and then we have to vote on whether or not it's in the best interest of the city? Is, um, does this rise to that?
Hmm, I don't believe it does, but I will pull that section up right now, uh, if you'll just-
I just want to make sure we cover our bases on that. That was a change to the, uh, ethics ordinance, ethics policy. Right. And, and it may be.
Going to that section right now, if you'll just bear with me.
And again, I, you know, in, in keeping with what, uh, Mr. Carbone just said, I don't think there's anything sinister and affairs going on. It's just I want to make sure that we follow our policy.
Okay, so, uh, that was, uh, an amendment to Section two-dash-eight-three, Regulations Applicable to Former Members of City Council and Administrative Boards in Certain Contracts. And then there was a provision that also updated with respect to a member of city council. So the city council shall not authorize a contract with a member, uh, of city council or business entity in which a member of council has a substantial interest. Uh, the, I'm sorry, let me scroll down. The city council shall not authorize a contract with a member of city council or a business entity in which the member has a substantial business interest unless the following conditions occur. A council member, um, with a substantial interest in a business entity complies with state and local regulations, filing disclosure affidavit, stating the nature and extent of the, their interest, which has been done. Councilman, uh, makes an affirmative finding that the authorization, the contract is in the financial best interest of the city, and the contract is approved by an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of the council members present.
Okay.
That is the, that, that would be applicable.
So the three-fourths is applicable?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we follow our, our, our-
Correct.
Policy to the T there. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Anyone?
Nope. Good deal. Uh, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez? Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemkosa?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Passes six to zero with, uh, abstention from, uh, Member Hernandez, so it did meet the, uh, supermajority vote. All right. With that, um, we're gonna- With that, we're going to, 10 should have been under Mayor Council issues, City Council discussion. So we will go to matters removed from consent agenda. Item. All right. Yeah. Member Cozer, would you present B, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action. Resolution R2023-114, so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our quarterly investment report, as required, to be presented to City Council per the Public Funds Investment Act. I think the notable thing here is that we are seeing our interest rates much higher than they have been in the past, and therefore interest earnings much higher. But be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. I'm not sure who pulled this. Member Campcar?
Just wanted to see, how much higher than budget are we? I know that we've been messing around with that in our budget process and moving, and I just, I know that this is one of those times.
Do we have those specific numbers available, Amy?
I don't have them right offhand, but I can follow up with you in the morning. I sent Rachel home after the tax item. I apologize.
That'd be great.
I do know they're much higher than what we budgeted. A big chunk of that is on the enterprise fund, the water and sewer fund side of things, not so much on the general fund. So, but we can provide that information.
Be great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on item B?
Just real quick, do we use the Texas pool funds? Is that what it is? Majority of the funds are in there?
We do have a number of pooled funds that we use. I want to say Texpool, and then there's, just drew a blank. Hang on, it might be on the report. Logic is a new one that we started, I believe, last year or the year prior. That's a different type of pool. Texas Class, that's the one, sir, that I was thinking of. So we use a different, a number of different pooled funds.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Good deal. We'll move to item number C. Mr. Hernandez, would you present that, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2023-124, so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. The city has applied for transportation alternative funds through text dots, statewide call for projects that they have out right now. Transportation alternative funds are typically for bicycle and pedestrian trail-type projects that are transportation alternatives as opposed to roads and cars. So the application, this particular application is for the Clear Creek Trail, and the limits are from the existing trail near Country Club Drive to Dixie Farm Road. This project and this segment of trails identified in our multimodal plan, as well as being part of the Clear Creek Trail Master Plan that the EDC and city partnered on a few years ago. So this type of funds, we regularly seek grant funding on these types of projects and these type of trail projects is because they provide up to 80% of the project cost. So we're able to move these projects forward by leveraging a significant amount of federal or state funds, as opposed to us doing these projects independent. So we've done this on multiple segments of the Clear Creek Trail system. We, the segment from Shadow Creek Ranch Sportsplex to Kirby was done with these type of funds, as well as the segment from Country Club going the other way on this side of town to Hughes Road. And then, we have a third project that's in the works right now that will build the Clear Creek Trail from Hughes Road up to the U of H Clear Lake Pearland Campus, all done with these types of matching funds. So they match up to 80% of the funds. And at this point, we've made it through the first phase of the application process. This is the second phase, and part of that submission is a resolution in support of the project.
Campcar, I think you pulled that.
Yeah. I'm overjoyed. We may not have to do this with certificates of obligation. I see that that was part of the funding as now. But I saw on segments 5.2 and 5.3 that you've got personnel in there. I'm assuming that's the recurring MNO piece to that. What is the personnel, in theory, going to be?
So just to, you know, to clarify on our matching funds, one of the potential sources for matching funds is certificates of obligation, but we would not have to do the entire project with that. It's the 20% matching funds. We would have to come up with those from somewhere. As far as the personnel, so one of the things we do when we're developing our capital improvement program is we look, as we implement projects, whether it be a park or a roadway project, or we build a new building, what are the operational and maintenance costs of those? And, you know, one of the things we, is we're well aware of, and we've talked at multiple workshops on those projects, is that as we've built much of our trail system and much of our, and we've built out much of our park system, we have not added those personnel typically. So one of the things we're looking at doing, moving forward, is to adequately fund these projects from the operating side, is look at, you know, if it's not personnel, then bring on the operating contracts to do the mowing and the trash pickup and the different sort of things along these different segments of trails. And so, we'll look at those, you know, incrementally until, you know, we've added enough projects to where we do add that personnel as opposed to a contract when it makes sense. So that's why we do always plug in operating cost in the capital improvement program for all projects.
City manager, I think us getting four to one on our money, I think, goes with our policy that it's better than one to one. So I do think that that's probably a good idea for the citizens. The question I just, I'd like to think about as we go into our budget, I know that we're having strenuous items come up, especially this year upcoming. Is, are we going to decide to go with in-house personnel or to your point contracted personnel? I think between both of 5.2 and 5.3, we're talking a little bit less than 220,000 or so, or 200. It's your budget, your staff, you guys figure out how you want to do it. I just want to understand, just if we get these dollars, I think it's a good deal for us. It's just, there's a component that you always get to keep, and we just have to figure out how to maintain that.
And I think, you know, we're, we apply for these dollars this year. There will be multiple years of design and implementation, and then we will have to absorb those operational costs. So we'll have that built in in the future.
Certainly, if we get 80% money, you know, 80, 80, 20, I mean, it's a great deal, but we do have to maintain it. So that's, you know, that's part of it as well, which I'm glad we're looking at capital improvements with ongoing cost, whereas for years and years and years, we didn't look at that. And so, now we have a better idea of what that looks like, you know, even if it is three years into the future, or four years into the future. So I think that's good. Good point. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for a vote on item C.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Moving to item E as an echo, Ms. Cade, would you present that, please?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2023-123, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a new program that the state's put out there through the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for Victims Assistant First Responder Mental Health Program. And so, you know, this is, you know, our going into that program. And so, we've taken kind of a, this is one of the things to support the growing mental health and peer support needs of our first responders in the fire department and the police department. So we've kind of taken a two-pronged approach at looking at this opportunity. And one of those is we've got our, you know, contract, looking at contracted mental health professional to start developing the building blocks for that mental health and peer support on the fire department side. And then, on the PD side, we've, you know, we've had an established strong mental health support program there that's been in place for a few years, and this will help fund those. So additional funding to help fund some of the things we are already doing, and some of the things that we need to put in place in other places for our first responders. So happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, it's a good thing, especially what we do with in-house. So looking to see the great strides here. Member Campcar?
I just, I wanted the clarity on between what part was new and what part was existing, and you hit it. So I'm good.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on item E.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And item F, Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2023-130, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, dual seconds, in the staff report.
So, Mayor and Council, this item was previously approved by the council on May 8. Unfortunately, the original request to the legal department had referenced the, an incorrect consultant name. So the actual resolution itself, the actual resolution itself had the incorrect name. The rest of the information throughout the agenda request and the proposal and everything else was the correct firm. So we're just coming back and correcting the resolution itself to award this to the RPS group.
All right.
That's our report.
My only question for clarity was the, I read that that was a little bit, was, is the issue on the 2301 project or the 2304? Because the 2301, the one, I guess, that was in the bond project, and the 2304, I guess, we kind of had it in COs. And so, I was just wondering which was the one that the resolution had to be fixed for.
I believe there was one resolution awarding this design that was for both projects, the one that was part of the 2019 project program, and then the adding the stormwater generator, or the generator for the stormwater pump station. So both of them had, they were all under one resolution that had the incorrect consultant name.
Good deal. Good clarification. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Includes matters removed from consent agenda. Other business, there is none. Mayor Council issues for council discussion. Item 10, discussion regarding the development of rules for council censure. This request was put forth by Member Cozer and Member Carbone. So I'm going to turn it to Member Cozer first.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as we saw in the general comments this evening, there's quite a bit of contention in the, in the public about what happened last meeting. And I've been hit up quite a bit by quite a few folks about what we did and how we did it. We don't have a formal censure policy, and so, in discussing with Darren, that's why I brought it up. And from there, Member Carbone, if you've got any comments?
No, I think after the fact, I mean, what's done is done, the censure was done, it feels personal to try to put that in place in the middle of it, but looking back, and hopefully we never do it again, but at some point, some future council will. And so, I think having some sort of policy or direction to look to besides just the charter, and that something that the council can process and get behind now when there's not a person on the other side of it, I think it makes a lot of sense to put that in place. So that's why I second it.
Yes, we'll just open it up for discussion. I did have a question for Mr. Coker along these lines, because, again, they should be very rare. You hope they're very rare. So I was asking whether or not you've looked at other, I mean, this request came in a week or so ago. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at other cities. One, you know, if there's censure policies or procedures that are out there. But number two, do you find a lot of cities that this is kind of routine in their policies?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, yes, as I saw this item requested by Councilmember Cozer and Carbone, my initial reaction is I wanted to see what was out there with some of the other cities, because ours doesn't have a specific, a specific policy, as previously noted. It's a mixed bag. Some cities have them, some cities don't, but they're quite common out there that they do have a policy. I haven't taken steps to prepare a policy or anything. I was wanting to wait till council directs me in a, essentially, that you have a majority of council directing me to do so, and I'll be happy to do so. But essentially, what you'll find is that there's typically, they're not real long sections, but they're usually within their council rules, rules of procedure. They're usually located in there. There's usually a general policy statement. There's the grounds for what would constitute a censure, a procedure to go through, which is usually, obviously, a vote of the City Council. But usually, what you'll find is it requires a two-thirds vote at a minimum to sustain a censure, which would make sense, because it's essentially the council is expressing the disapproval of the actions of another council member. And then, usually, the other thing is that there are consequence, and the consequence is, in fact, the censure. What you'll find is some cities will take that, if there is a censure, make sure that it's part of the public record. And then, also, if, sometimes you'll see that it has to be put on there, disclosed on the city's website, things of that nature, if there is a public censure. So those are things that you'll generally find in them. But if the council sees fit to direct me to proceed with preparing something, that's something I can do. But I'll take direction with council accordingly.
So, yeah, obviously, what we're looking for tonight is consensus, you know, to either move forward or consensus that we don't need it, one or the other.
So, Mayor, if I can, I know last Monday was my first meeting, and obviously, I didn't get a chance to speak about this matter. As Councilmember Campcar pointed out, I was the man at the forum talking about asking City Manager Trent Epperson to file for the position. And I did it publicly. And I want to make something very clear. I had talked to Mr. Epperson in January before I filed and encouraged him to run. In my heart, and even today, I stand by what I told him, that he was the best candidate. And the second part I want to make very clear, the person you talked about, the 90-year-old man, if you had a personal chance to meet him, Reverend Barnett is probably the nicest man you'll meet. For you to drag him into your issue is appalling.
Let's, I want to, I want to make sure that we keep it about the censure policy and not back to.
I do apologize, Mayor, but I needed to get that off my chest.
I know. And so, I was giving you that much leeway. And so, I appreciate that. I don't want to make it any more about that than it is, we need to talk about a policy moving forward. So wanted to make sure that we didn't go any further with that. But we are looking for comments towards, is there a consensus to have a policy in place? So we do have rules of procedure, how we do something, what we do, so it's not something that's made up on the fly.
I think that having something in place makes sense. There, having something spelled out. So... There, uh, having something spelled out, so it ju, it just does make sense. We, we don't have, we don't have to question it. We don't have to make a, you know, we have, we know right where to go, right, what to do. I don't, I don't think this is going to happen again for, by any means, but, um, to have a procedure won't hurt.
Member Barry, you started it.
Yeah, Mayor, um, I'm kind of wondering, so let's just assume we have a procedure. What are the repercussions?
Just, I haven't seen what it all looks like, so I don't, I, I.
What, what would a repercussion be?
Well, so, uh, let me, so let me, let me back up. So procedures would be what, where, how would you even go about putting a, 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 a public censure, you know, on an agenda and do? So there would be, uh, something to look at, that procedure in which that happens. Second, I, I'm assuming, so correct me, uh, Mr. Coker if I'm wrong, but then also what happens in that proceeding, right? Um, as we did, we, we opened up, talked the case, we gave, um, Mr. Kamkar the opportunity to rebut and defend and which I would do in any case. I would want anybody who's accused of something, the opportunity to defend themselves. Uh, and then you, people have their say and their piece. Uh, I've been told by, by many a, a person in town that, that we kept it on point, we kept it from getting, getting personal and name-calling and those types of things, which is good. So I, I don't know what the repercussions from that would be other than we, we had to exercise it and people didn't like the fact that we had to exercise the, the policy. So I'm not sure what repercussions you would be looking for, you know, if we had a policy in place to go by. So I'm looking at it as.
Other than what we've already done.
Right. I mean, I, so I would look at it against what we've done and, and what we've done was we, we held somebody accountable, we held our own accountable, we would hold any, one of us accountable if we did the same thing. And so how, where and what would we go about doing that? We, we did that in the midst of that, if we had a policy, we would all go and say, here's, here's the policy on how, what and where. So I'm not sure the repercussions that you're, that you're talking about specifically. Obviously, and then there's, there's always political fallout, political fallout on every one of us, on everything that we do on any given Monday night. So that's just, comes with the territory of who and, you know, and the positions we're in. So I'm not sure if that answered your questions other than I just don't know what the, what a repercussion would be if we had a policy on.
I'll just be clear, when you review, um, policies across state, they're very limited in what they do because that's all you can do is hold each other accountable and that's usually through some form of public reprimand. It doesn't go beyond that. Um, and something beyond that's going to be usually governed by your city charter and that invests that right to the, to the public, not to, to the city council.
Yeah, I look, you know, you look across the country and, you know, um, I, I think we have a, a member of the state legislature that was just censured or I, I can't remember the word, but like removed from office. Uh, you know, and, and so we, we don't have that authority to remove anybody from office unless the charter gives us that authority. And this wouldn't supersede or, or do anything more than what the charter would allow anyway. It's more, Mr. Coker, if I say it, I, I think it's more of a rules of procedure. What would you bring somebody forward on a censure and then how would you go through doing it? If I understand it correct?
Correct. Uh, essentially what are the grounds that the council can agree would constitute, that would warrant, uh, a censure? And then what is the procedure? That, that's essentially what the policies are. They're, they're generally fairly short to the point, but it's a, it's usually an allegation, a specific allegation, um, that's brought by a member, two members, whatever, uh, in accordance with our policies. And then, uh, generally speaking, the, the individual has the, the right to defend themselves in, in that hearing. Uh, and then, um, ultimately the council would vote to decide on whether or not it's censure.
And I do think, uh, a quote affirmative vote should be a, a supermajority. I think it, it should be where the council is, is galvanized, uh, in one direction or the other over the issue.
I don't have a, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
What?
We've already done, we've already done what we need to do. I mean, um, but if you guys want to have a policy and do whatever, I, I support that. I mean, I think we, you know, we spent, I think, three meetings earlier in my brief tenure as a council member, talking about, uh, this very subject, you know? And so we strengthened the policies associated with that. If this is another way to strengthen those, I'm all for it, you know? Because as council members, we all have to walk in a certain lane. And once we, once we stray outside of that lane, I, I know there aren't any going to be any civil repercussions or criminal repercussions or anything like that, but we have to take this position seriously.
Yep.
And so outside of that, whatever, I'm good with it.
Any other questions, comments? I mean, there was a consensus that I heard. You have a comment on it?
I, I think we, it, we've done it and councils change all the time and it's going to be one of those things where they can decide how they want to move forward with it. I, I think the way we did it was, I, I mean, I didn't know what to anticipate, but we did it, it's done. And so, I mean, even if there was a process, I'd probably still come into it kind of, you know, like.
What does this mean?
Tiptoeing around, yeah.
Well, and I, I think it should be, um, judicious is the right word, shouldn't, shouldn't be just on a whim, go and do. So I don't know if the policy, you know, that you had put together, you know, there's, there's got to be kind of a high bar to even.
And I was even thinking about the threshold to that point. Like, I don't even know how to delineate all of the different things, cause I mean, it seems like it's such a potentially nuanced thing where really it's the body's consensus that we disapprove of something. Or it, at least two members to, to, to bring it forward. Uh, but yes, just keep in mind that what, uh, most recently what occurred, the mechanism for that was actually a separate set of rules outside of your council rules and it was specifically dealing with, in that case confidential information and Robert's rules as it applies to that. So, um, if you're dealing with other items, it may not be covered. And so you may not have a mechanism for something else that the council would, would choose to, to proceed in that manner. So just wanted to, to make sure everybody understood that it was a different mechanism that triggered it the other night.
One more quick comment, Darren. In the other cities that you looked up, um, there are policies that it's, uh, allow for the person being censured to respond?
Yes, always.
Every time?
Always. Absolutely.
I shouldn't say always, it should.
And I would just caution council about one thing. Um, anytime you develop, uh, regulations, uh, you know, the, the key is, is, I, I would just caution any, anybody considering these things is, is don't allow it to, you know, you don't want it to be weaponized. Uh, you know, obviously you want to use good judgment and, and discretion when bringing allegations and then have that discussion and then the action taken. But, uh, there, you, you see it in communities that can't be weaponized. And so you just want to make sure that you use good discretion.
Well, and that just goes back to what Member Barry said, it's a very important position that you have. The, the community has placed you here for a reason and just making sure that our decorum and what we do and how we do it and working and looking for the team is the, is the best that we can possibly do. And I think if we're all doing that, we should generally speaking, you know, avoid these types of situations moving forward. So that would be my hope. Darren, do you have, uh, all that you need?
I do want to make, Mayor, I, I know that, uh, council member Cade and council member Hernandez indicated they were okay moving forward. I'm assuming the two who made the motion, uh, were, were, I see the head nods, yes, they were. So I, I just wanted to make sure that. Oh, I, I, to clarify, I, I don't actually want to lock us into a scope, so I would like to leave it open, honestly. They generally are. Um, what, what I, what I've seen is that they, they usually are. It's, cause as, as you try to narrow it down too much, it's so difficult to do that. Because, and again, the key is that you, in order to do something like that and you're going to require, you know, at, at a minimum two-thirds vote of the council, it's, you, you better make sure that you have your ducks in a row before you bring allegations.
I think what more, you know, along the lines I'd be looking for, or anybody that's sitting in this chair is making sure that when it's put on and how it's presented and how you proceed through the proceeding is important as well. Uh, just making sure that it's. And I, and I like the two-thirds, that, that keeps it, you know, again, it needs to be.
High bar.
A very high bar, it needs to be a high bar to, uh, to even come up and be on an agenda, cause it's a very serious thing. Darren, I don't know if, if through this process, it'd be interesting to know how many, you know, censure-type votes happen across the state of Texas in any given year. My guess is it's very, very small. It's not something that's used often as a weapon, uh, should be entered into, uh, shouldn't, should not be entered into lightly, should have, you know, some gravity to it. So, uh, that'd be interesting to see. So I, I don't know, do you have your?
I feel like I had clarity from the council. What I will do is, um, like I said, there, there, it's not a, a lengthy process to put together, uh, to develop a process. Uh, so what I can do is get a draft out to council, uh, soon, uh, and, uh, get some feedback from, from y'all. If you have any questions, concerns, want to discuss it with me and, and then I can, uh. We'll, we'll test it out on Lanning. And then, uh, what I'll do is, uh, if, uh, depending on how I, uh, how soon feedback comes, it, it, we can plan on having it for consideration, uh, this next month.
Sounds good. Um, any other last comments on that? Seeing none, we will move to adjournment at 11:05.